Call the regular meeting of the Pennington County Commission to order. Ask you to please silence your pagers and telephones. And agendas are in the back of the room. And if you want to speak on any particular item, I'll ask you to fill out a speaker request form and turn it into Holly on your right. Start with Commissioner Lester leading us in a moment of silent reflection and pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lester. Need a motion to on the review and approving the agenda.
Don't move.
Second. I've got a motion and second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. I'm now going to invite Barrett Tyson Crew up to the lectern and for a executive proclamation. Alex, I think you're in charge.
Good morning. Thank you all for having us. We very much appreciate it. I'm Alex Purcell, Assistant Director of Pennington County Health and Human Services in the Veterans Service Office. Mr. David Gates here to my right. He's really been helpful with coming here today and with the proclamation to be read and, you know, provided to him. And he's going to say a few words here, but before he does that, I just wanted to say that Mr. Gates does a ton in our community with the Veterans Helping Hand Project. Huge hand up for veterans in our community, not just Pennington County, but the existing community outside of that as well. Many of you will notice the veteran banners downtown when they go up in the fall. Mr. Gates is also a large part of that, the Veteran Banner Project. And for many years, he's hosted the World War II Luncheon over at Tria each year to get our World War II veterans and recognize them. It's one of the most, those things are some of the most impactful things done in our community. And so I'd just like to recognize Mr. Gates for that and just extend my appreciation for him being able to come down and accept this proclamation. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Gates.
Yeah. Well, this proclamation you're talking about here honoring Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home Day, that is so appreciated, you would not believe it, of how we feel about that. I really appreciate that. And tomorrow night, we're having our own meeting and the proclamation will be read tomorrow night at the meeting. Just want to thank you very much.
Very good. I'm going to ask Commissioner La Croix if he would please read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Pennington County, South Dakota Executive Proclamation, Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. Whereas Vietnam War was fought in Vietnam from 1961 to 1975 and involved the North Vietnam and the Vice Kong in conflict with United States Armed Forces in South Vietnam, and whereas the United States became involved in Vietnam because of policymakers in the United States believed that if South Vietnam fell to a communist government, that communism would spread throughout the rest of Southeast Asia. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces began serving an advisory role in the South Vietnam Vietnamese in 1961. And whereas, as a result of the Gulf Tonkin Incident, August 2nd, 1964, and August 4th, 1964, Congress overwhelmingly passed the Gulf Tonkin Resolution on August 7th, 1964, which effectively handed over war-making powers to the President Johnson until such time as peace and security had returned to Vietnam. Whereas 1965, United States Armed Forces ground combat units arrived in Vietnam. And whereas by the end of 1965, were 80,000 United States troops in Vietnam, and by 1969, a peak of approximately 540,000 troops was reached. And whereas on January 27th, 1973, the Treaty of Paris was signed, which required the release of the United States prisoners of war held in North Vietnam and withdrawn withdrawal of all United States Armed Forces from South Vietnam. And whereas on March 29th, 1973, the United States Armed Forces completed the withdrawal of the combat troops from Vietnam. Whereas more than 50,000 members, the United States Armed Forces lost their lives in Vietnam, and more than 300,000 members, the Armed Forces were wounded. And whereas members of the United States Armed Forces who served bravely, faithfully for the United States during the Vietnam War were caught up in their return home in the crossfire of public debate about the involvement of the United States in Vietnam War. And whereas it was also the first time in history, America failed to welcome its veterans back as heroes. Whereas the establishment of the Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day would be an appropriate way to honor those members of the United States Armed Forces who served in Vietnam during the Vietnam War. And now therefore be resolved, Pennington County Commission do hereby recognize March 29th, 2022 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. The Commission further honors and recognizes contributions to veterans of the Armed Forces who served in Vietnam. The rest is the signature. Thank you, Debbie, for all the work that you do. We appreciate it.
Mr. Gates, you are here representing thousands of Vietnam veterans today. We appreciate you being here. It'd be an honor for us to, as a commission, to present you with the proclamation and have our picture taken with you.
I would be honored.
Thank you.
Alex? There you come.
Why are you having it? Talking all the background. Okay.
Why did he need you there? Aye.
Nine.
I was wondering if I could see it.
Yes, I am.
I was wondering if I could see it.
I need a motion.
I need a motion.
Move to approve the executive proclamation.
I've got a motion and a second to who approved the chair's signature on the executive proclamation declaring March 29th, 2022 as Welcome Home Vietnam Veterans Day. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Holly, we're at the consent calendar.
Morning Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda with the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of March 1st, 2022. Number seven is to acknowledge the resolution for a minor adjustment to the road district boundaries of the Winton Road District described as Eisenbahn subdivision, lot B, with the legal description as presented. Number eight is to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Ms. Jermaine Littlebear to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. Number nine is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of February 2022. Number 10 is approval of the joint powers agreement for weed spraying services between South Dakota Department of Transportation and Pennington County. Number 11 is to acknowledge the change in vendor from the December 7th, 2021 authorization to purchase vehicles from Wagner Auto Company and to authorize the purchase of the following five new vehicles from McKee Ford Rapid City under state contract 17619, which is going to be four 2022 Ford Explorer PIs for a total purchase price of $160,880, and one 2022 unmarked Ford Explorer for the total purchase price of $29,447 submitted by the Sheriff's Office. And finally, number 12 is approval of the request for authorization to reapply for the VOLCA and the stock ballot grants submitted by the state's attorneys and the Victims Assistance Division.
Are there any members of the public question have any of these items removed from the consent calendar so that they may be discussed like a regular item on the agenda? Seeing none, is there any Commissioners that wish to have any of these items removed?
Chairman, number eight, please.
Number what?
Eight.
Any others? I would take a motion to approve six, seven, nine, 10, 11, and 12 under the consent.
Don't move.
Got a motion.
Second.
Commissioner Lester and a second from Commissioner La Croix. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number eight, Commissioner Adcock.
Thank you. Me and Commissioner Roskinek are on the Pennington County Housing Authority, and we have worked with Jermaine Littlebear before, and she does a wonderful job. And it sounds like in the interviews, there was three really good candidates. So I appreciate everybody that put in to be on that board, but we also have Brian Otback, he's our director here, if we want to introduce him today. Maybe he has a few words on some of the things, I know it's about the appointment of Jermaine Littlebear, but we're pretty excited about some stuff we're doing in on our Pennington County Housing. And Jermaine has been a part of that, so I appreciate that we, or in the interviews, that Jermaine got picked again, even though we had some really good candidates, because she has done a lot for our housing authority. She is our vice chair at this time, and I just really appreciate people coming up and wanting to volunteer. But Brian maybe come up and tell us some of the stuff. I was trying to tell him, and if I could, it's kind of like personal privilege that he gets to speak a little bit more, not just on Jermaine, but the things we're doing on repositioning that we try to explain for our housing authority. So just some stuff that we're pretty excited about moving forward.
Yeah, so the, I would concur that Commissioner Littlebear has been a very engaged, very knowledgeable housing commissioner, and I am very grateful that I was given the opportunity to sit in on those interviews and wholeheartedly make the recommendations that she should be given an opportunity to serve a full five-year term. We are, the last year, we've been kind of getting to know each other as a board and as a housing authority, and we're pretty new, even with the board. And what we are planning and what we are talking about and having conversations about not only the development that you're already aware of, that you have, again, so grateful for the gift that you provided for the development that we're already doing, but we're really evaluating and analyzing what we can do with our public housing program. A 50-year-old program, it's tried and true, but it's very underfunded. And I think that what we've recognized in Pennington County, we do things efficiently. And if we could put to work that efficiency and, you know, not necessarily ask the government for any more money, but really be more efficient with the federal dollars that are already coming here, that we could really expand this, the affordable housing, the assisted housing that we have through our housing authority. It might also result in additional vouchers to our community. So, you know, our county, our city, we're growing, the population's getting bigger, but there's no more, there's no more federal money coming. And I think that we just have to be, we have to be very, again, efficient in analyzing what we can do to grow our housing authority, again, to try to match this population growth. Asset repositioning in very quickly, from what I understand, we would actually, our 500 units of public housing, we would, in time, we would tell the federal government that we would, we don't, we would want to move from a public housing platform into more of a private property with Section 8 platform. That's really what it is. With the properties becoming private property, HUD removes themselves from the Declaration of Trust. And when that happens, then that would open us up to go out and to secure financing, the other things that would become much more efficient for us to do if HUD wasn't on those declarations of trusts. We do have a very good long track record with Section 8. It's a very well-funded program. The other thing with public housing is, is we are always in the middle of this, of this tension at the federal level with regard to federal budgets. And public housing is always drawn into that. And with Section 8, what happens is, is we would sign probably like 20-year contracts with the government, and it becomes less of an annual funding issue at the federal government. We would be able to have better tools to budget for ourselves if we knew, if we knew kind of where our funding was coming for the next 20 years. Anyway, there's just a lot of things that are very intriguing about it. I've been very thankful for, you know, Commissioner Hadcock and Commissioner Rosskinek being very open to this notion of asset repositioning. We are, tomorrow night's going to be a long housing meeting, I'm sorry for that, but we actually have a consultant currently who gave a presentation our last meeting, and will actually put some more meat on the bones for us tomorrow night. Again, we're just kind of, that's where we're at. The board will be asked in time here to go ahead and to really, let's, you know, we're going to make an intentional decision that that's a direction that we want to go in. It'll look different for us, but I think five, 10 years from now, I think there's a possibility we could look back on our housing authority and it could look a lot different than what we have. The main thing that I, that I would be proud of is for the people that are receiving our services, it's not going to look any different to them. They're still going to receive the, you know, affordable housing, subsidized housing, the things that they are receiving from us right now as a housing authority, that's not going to change. But really, the behind the scenes, the way we're funded, it's going to, I think it's going to look a lot different. And I think that that's, we're due for that. Again, we're 50 years old this year, and it's time for us to be open to, again, those changes. I hope I, I hope I answered your question for you and was able to.
Thank you, Brian. Brian has been an amazing director, and he's actually pushed us a lot of these areas that we can do different, that we can help our people in Rapid City and Pennington County more efficiently and effectively. And that came from Brian and the rest, our board. We have two that have been with us for a while as well, and they're like, wow, we have not got this much done before. And that wasn't, I don't believe, we were a part of that, me and Commissioner Roskinek, but it's because of Brian. So with, and that's, I guess, was the point with Jermaine, being part of that, it would be hard to switch somebody out when we've kind of done a lot more different things than we have before. So I appreciated that Brian brought up that she has been efficient and effective for us as well. So anyway, thank you, Brian, for that. I know you weren't supposed to be called up today, but thank you. You give better information on basically what we're moving forward than I did then yesterday.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinek.
On another note, you didn't mention the progress that we're making on our 70-unit apartment complex that's going to be located by the Vicky Pars Park on Haynes, but my understanding that, that's well, I mean, it's rolling along pretty good, and there could be groundbreaking in August possibly.
Yeah, so I think that last I had heard from our AE firm was that the full plans are about 20% done, because that's what they've submitted a progress payment for. And that the engineering firm is FMG, they will be out there drilling. The surveying has been done, but I do believe that they're still doing some of their drilling for, you know, whatever they need for sampling, you know, soil samples and all that, but that's all being done. Yeah, but it's moving along pretty quickly. I would expect that at some point here, our architect will be notifying us that we're kind of starting the process of getting through plan development with the city, so.
Nice. Thank you, Brian. Appreciate you coming up. Now I need a motion to accept the recommendation for the appointment of Jermaine Littlebear to the Pennington County Housing and Redevelopment Commission. I have a motion from Commissioner Roskinek and a second by Commissioner Hadcock. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item, item 13. I'm going to call Ron Jeffries and John Kaiser up, give us a little report relative to the Black Hills Show and what's happening at Central State Fairgrounds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. We appreciate you giving us a few minutes today. I did notice on the agenda that we have, Ron Jeffries, General Manager of the Central State Fair. We have John Kaiser with me. We have him listed as Operations and Event Manager, and earlier this year, he was promoted to Assistant General Manager. So I'll make that correction in your, in your next, our next appearance before you. First off, I just want to let the commission know that the annual meeting for Central State Fair for our membership, membership's open to the public, it's a $10 membership, and you're eligible to vote for our incoming directors, is March 28th. We start at 6:00 PM, so we'll get that on your calendar. And the officers that we have at our, at the Central State Fair changed last night, they'll be effective at the annual meeting. Tyler Travillian will be our president. Jerry Cope will be our vice president. Tanner Schilder will be secretary, and Casey Gerlach will be our treasurer. So those will be our new officers starting at the annual meeting. So I've got a stock show report for you, and then John's going to give you some updates on facilities, but we had a really good stock show, lots and lots of things went right. First off, I just want to make a public comment and thank you to the entire staff at the Monument. They did a fabulous job hosting us, bent over backwards to make sure that with all the changes going on, that everybody's needs were met, and I thought they did a fantastic job. We're grateful that the effort that they put forward. Also, Sutton Rodeo has put the rodeo on in the new Summit Arena, was a great draw. Sutton family did a great job producing that rodeo. The parts that we took care of, we're very proud to really focus on youth events this year. We brought all of our youth activities previously that had been spread out down at the fairgrounds and brought everything, three days of livestock shows, sheep and goat shows, Youth Day activities, 4-H and FFA activities, all back to the Monument, and had really fantastic turnout for those events. Probably the single biggest growth in activities came through those youth events. We still have tremendous success in our horse sale. We took a horse sale that a few years ago, we were trying to break a million dollars in sales. We hit 1.2 two years ago. Last year, we hit 1.9 million in sales, and this year, the sale was 2.6 million. Just tremendous growth, and that really shows the effort of our volunteers and Horse Committee about promoting and producing that and really have drawn some national attention. That's one of the things about being open during the COVID year was we grew a lot of eyes from areas outside of Rapid City to come and attend. We had a marketing presentation at our board meeting last night that Commissioner Drews and Commissioner Rosskinek attended, and the marketing, we contacted over 6 million people, direct traffic back through our website from across the Midwest. So it was really, really interesting to see the numbers of the traffic that were coming through. We had some new events. One of the really cool new events, we did a celebrity showmanship this year, and it involved members of the community coming out and taking animals from the petting zoo and showing them in a competition, just like they do with the youth livestock shows. Your very own Commissioner Roskinek was in the competition, did a very fine job. But our Sheriff's Department, Brian Mueller, was the champion of that, so congratulations, Brian. It was a lot of, it was a lot of fun. I know you can hear us out there. It was a lot of fun, but just new events, and that's one of the things that's so cool about having some more space to work with, is it allows us to expand and just take on new events, bring youth activities up to the, to the event. We were able to bring our award ceremony, it used to be the Stockman's Banquet Ball, was now Buckles and Bling. We were able to bring that event up to the Monument this year. So it really helped us consolidate some activities and create some synergy that helped the entire show. Civic Center had a fantastic year, Sutton Rodeo Family had a fantastic year, and Central State Fair had a fantastic year. Very proud of the job that my staff did, but I'm also grateful for the volunteers, for our board of directors, the people in the community, and the sponsors that stepped up and helped make this show a national show. And, you know, our biggest complaint, of course, was parking. But when you go to a national show anywhere else, you end up taking cabs to get to the facility all over, Uber. And, and so we know that there's some parking that's different from what we're used to. We're used to driving right to the front and parking at events, but when you attend national shows, it's a little different. And, and so I'm actually glad that that's the biggest problem you have, is that parking's the issue, because it means that people are coming and attending, and it was really very well-attended. I would answer any questions you might have on, on the stock show.
Any questions for Ron?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner.
So last night, Ron, I believe we talked about being in the top 20. So there's the top 12, and then there's the top 20, and so the Black Hills Stock Show would fall somewhere between the top 12 and the top 20.
Yeah, that was for just, just the American Quarter Horse Show.
Okay.
So our Quarter Horse Show that takes place the week ahead of our official dates is in the top 20 of all, all stocks, all Quarter Horse Shows nationwide. Our stock show is more like fourth in the nation overall.
Okay.
So, and, you know, we're, we're fourth to like Houston, Fort Worth, Denver. So all the ones that are ahead of us are in populations of 2 and 3 million or better. So to have a town of 78,000 people or whatever we have in Rapid City to host a show of this size is insane. It's phenomenal, and we're just happy to be a part of it.
Well, I really appreciate you and John, the efforts that you put into that program, and every year, it just gets bigger and bigger.
That's always the plan.
You got a bigger facility, sky's the limit.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hadcock.
I've always appreciated the fair when I was young. I didn't know a lot about the Ag, and I'll keep telling people that, but then when I got in the county, you start learning more about the Ag tourism and the Ag community. And then we also, as the commissioners, we learned how much that, that our fairgrounds, the county fairgrounds contribute to our sales tax and our economic development for Rapid City and Pennington County. So always appreciated the fairgrounds in every sense of the word, but now that it's kind of funny, you get more and more information, and then you see what we do, and we make a huge impact. And I think that's pretty impressive for you, Ron, how much we've came in the last, even four to five years, and with the help of John and, and the city, and how they have recognized us as contributors to economic development for them. So it's been pretty cool to watch as a commissioner, watching the community and how they have participated in this and how the city has, like I said, has been in this with us as a team. So all of it makes a driving force for Rapid City and Pennington County for our future as well. And then as this board, I appreciated our board and our contribution that we have gave with Levy, because that was huge, because now our buildings can be fixed up more and we can add more and more to that Ag tourism for not only Pennington County and Rapid City, it's through the state. So congratulations on everything that you guys have accomplished, you and John and your team and your board. It's been pretty amazing to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I will say that, and I'm going to turn it to John to talk about building improvements, the kind of the, if you build it, they will come story, but, you know, when we built the event center, we envisioned a lot of different types of Ag events, and there certainly are lots of those. But when you talk about usage of a facility, we hosted the finals for these motocross races this last weekend. It's a set, a set, a series of six different races that take place during the winter. They had 460 entries, participants, for that race. So you imagine a winter convention coming six times, it brings 400 people, 400 contestants, plus families and entourage with them to Rapid City. I mean, it's a, it's a phenomenal economic impact for just that one event. Going into this next month, April, we've got a total of five days in the month of April that we're not hosting events. Four Thursdays and one Wednesday that we don't have an event scheduled on grounds. Otherwise, we're as busy as you can possibly believe with, and that's, you know, grounds wide, but with activities. And that's a tribute to the, the service that the staff provides in the facilities. And I'm going to let John talk to you about some upcoming improvements to the facilities.
Super. All yours, John.
All right. Despite the title change, please continue to send all complaints to the general manager, though. No, as I'm sure many of you know, you know, 2016, we received vision funds from the city, and we were able to complete the Barn Nine Project, which has had a huge impact on the events that we've been able to bring in. Going into kind of the facilities itself this year, in 2022, the event center itself is booked about 49 weekends so far this calendar year, so there's.
They had four hundred and sixty entries, participants for that race. So you imagine a, a winter convention coming six times. It brings four hundred people, four hundred contestants, plus families and entourage with them to Rapid City. I mean, it's a, it's a phenomenal economic impact for just that one event. Going into this next month, April, we've got a total of five days in the month of April that we're not hosting events. Four Thursdays and one Wednesday that we don't have an event scheduled on grounds. Otherwise, we're, we are as busy as you can possibly believe with, with, and that's, you know, grounds wide, but with activities. And that's a tribute to the, the service that the staff provides in the facilities. And I'm gonna let John talk to you about some upcoming improvements to the facilities.
Super. All yours, John.
All right. Despite the title change, please continue to send all complaints to the General Manager, though. No, as I'm sure many of you know, you know, two thousand sixteen, we received vision funds from the city, and we were able to complete the Barn Nine Project, which has had a huge impact on the events that we've been able to bring in. Going into kind of the facilities itself this year, in two thousand twenty-two, the event center itself is booked about forty-nine weekends so far this calendar year. So there's, there's one date before the fair that I probably won't book just because it'd be nice to have a week to kind of get things going before the fair. And then I think it's Thanksgiving and Christmas, or the other two weekends that don't have anything going on right now. But with that being said, you know, we did apply this year, or excuse me, in two thousand twenty-one for vision funds again, this time looking at more of the west side of the fairgrounds. Many of the facilities over there, the Sule, the Livestock Barns, Fine Arts and Creative Arts are buildings that have been around for a very long time. The Sule, I believe, was some, was built sometime in the nineteen fifties. The Fine Arts, Creative Arts, and the barns were, were kind of spread out in the seventies after the flood. Many of them being donated. The two barns came from, one was an implement dealer that used to be over by the School of Mines. Another one was, I think, the county had built brand new. And, and then the Fine Arts and Creative Arts, of course, were just built after the flood. So with going with that, those were the, those were the projects that we had in mind with the vision funds. We applied for a million. We got nine hundred and eighty thousand to go in there and just really just do a remodel on them, freshen them up. We've had a lot of interest in the facilities coming this winter time for youth sports, city sports. It's kind of a new direction for us, but we're really excited about it. So we're currently in the works. I'm working with the city and with the county, of course, to get those projects underway. We're hoping that the city allocated that money to us in two thousand twenty-two. So it is kind of one of those things where we need to get rocking and rolling on them. So luckily, we've had a lot of good luck with vendors coming in and being willing to participate. So we're really looking forward to those projects. As Commissioner Haddock mentioned, with the, the improvement money that we had got from the county, we're directing that towards about four different facilities this year. One being the British Steel, the Lyons Building. And then we're also looking at doing our campground and also doing the Horticulture Building, which is actually the, the top of the Alfalfa Palace, which was where the Fine Arts Building now sits, but was damaged during the flood. It was the top portion of the Alfalfa Palace that was saved and now sits across from the Fine Arts. So we're excited about this. The British Steel, for example, as far as just, you know, what simple adjustments can do to your, you know, to the economic impact of the area. But we're gonna go in there and refinish the floors. They have an asphalt floor right now. There's no restrooms. The lighting's really bad. You have to turn the lights on with, using the electrical panel. So we're gonna go in there and just freshen it up, put a new floor in, put new lighting, better controls, ADA compliant restrooms. And we'll, we've already seen an explosion with that building, but we anticipate a lot of, a lot of new rentals and a lot of new activity down there with those going on. Lyons Building, again, we're just kind of going for a unified look. I know Commissioner Haddock has been, has been talking about beautification down there for quite some time. And that really is the, the vision going into this year and next year. And you know, the idea of, of continuing to keep our foot on the gas. I mean, even though we're busy and things are going well, you know, we have the same approach going to the stock show. I mean, just because something's going well and you're at the top doesn't mean that you put it in cruise control. You know, we're just, we're basically gonna keep taking this money and, and all these resources that we have and, and continue to push forward and continue to be, you know, one of the best fairgrounds we can be. And, and we, big thank you to you guys for all you do for us. And the staff that you guys have with Pennington County, from the Sheriff's Office to buildings and grounds to highway. There's no shortage of people wanting to help, and it goes a long way in the making of what we do is successful. So thank you.
Any questions to John?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross.
Ron, you ought to expand on the postcard that you found in the Alfalfa Building. I thought that's quite interesting.
So one of our, one of our volunteers and guys, one of the guys that works with us, Travis Bolt, does a lot of history research. And he came across a postcard dated nineteen fifteen that showed the Alfalfa Palace. And then it showed a piece of grandstands from the fairgrounds, and it was titled the Western South Dakota Fair. And, and out of all the things I've looked at, I've never, I've never knew that Central States Fair had a name, Western South Dakota Fair, at any time previous. So that was pretty remarkable. He made it, framed it for us, and we have it hanging in the office. So it's pretty cool.
I'm guessing that building's gonna be pretty old.
Yeah, it is. I think it was recited once, and, and now that wood is rotted and needs to be readdressed and still keep the historic value to it. So.
Thank you.
One other thing that I would mention is that Central States Fair, Inc., through the success of producing Fair and Stock Show, has also put a hundred thousand dollars into a fund to be used for these projects and for the, for the building projects and for equipment to, to be utilized in those projects. And Central States Fair Foundation has also pledged fifty thousand towards those efforts. So they're turning around and using the resources that we accumulate for the same good of the organization.
Very good. John, I think you have a big challenge with the projects that you have to try to fit those projects in with all the events that you have also coming. So best of luck in making that all pull together and work for you.
Thanks.
I want to thank both of you for being here.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next item we have on the agenda is an information item. And we have Fern and Ross Johnson, I believe, are here. Right here. Yep, close. And Fern, I'd ask you to come forward. The Johnsons have a complaint against the Rapid City Municipal Solid Waste Recovery and Composting Biosalads Facility. And so we are going to allow the Johnsons to make a presentation. Fern, if I could ask you to, I'm gonna limit you to about fifteen minutes on summarizing the complaint or the information that you want to provide to us. Point out that this is information only to us. This is not an action item that we're anticipating that we would take any action on. It's not scheduled for that today. And so I would turn it over to you at this point in time to give us your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, fellow commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this matter to your attention today. Welcome questions, limited time we have here. I'm hoping I can get through it. I've never done a PowerPoint before, so please bear with me.
Ms. Fern. Thank you, Ms. Fern.
Please bear with me on the PowerPoint. Okay. That's not on the screen. Oh, okay. This is a complaint regarding invalid permitting of the section thirty-one hundred and six acres that the city expanded upon in two thousand six. County's role and jurisdiction and enforcement powers here are under seven eight, South Dakota law seven eight. County Commissioners, eleven two, county planning and zoning, thirty-four A six, solid waste management system, and under the county drainage system, under forty-six A, ten A, and forty-six A, ten B. In two thousand two, the city purchased adjoining property, section thirty-one hundred and six acres. And within that contract, there were several provisions, moratoriums put upon that purchase for ten years. One of them was the prior property owner retained interest in the property for ten years, which the city was not allowed to utilize the real estate, any adverse effect for the grazing or a buffer for the ten years, and also permit for expansion purposes of the Rapid City sanitary waste management site during that ten-year period. In two thousand six, four years into the ten-year moratorium period, city sought to expand its permitted boundary, which was on section nineteen-three-hundred-and-forty-five acres, to include this hundred and six acre site. In two thousand eight, the D N R gave its initial first authorization to the city to operate a solid waste operation upon the hundred and six acre site, despite that ten-year provision. City was not only in breach of the purchase contract agreement through its obtaining the permitting of the, of the, that second site in two thousand six, a hundred and six acres. We believe that the city and the D N R together contracted a scheme to permit the hundred and six acres, which allowed the city to circumvent ever having to fulfill all applicable rules and state laws concerning its request to expand onto this new site that had never been permitted before. The role in which prompts this governing body's position here is under thirty-four A six, one oh three. And I won't glance at this, just glance at it. But basically, it states that there's two meetings. The first meeting is to, the county commissioners here would explain the permitting process of a, of a, either a new site or an expansion of a site. I'm lying here under one through ten, among other criteria, which must be provided by the city at that first meeting. Before it gets to under thirty-four A six, one oh three, county approval for solid waste, storage, treatment, or disposal. Any application to the board or the secretary for a new permit or first authorization. Like I said, the hundred and six acres had never been permitted before. So in order to request the first authorization to operate, just to operate and to be permitted, they shall include a resolution by the governing body of the county, which the city was proposing this site to be, which is a hundred and six acres on section thirty. Next, within the same sec, this same law, approved by the county within no more than twenty-four months before the issuance or the first authorization by the secretary. It's a condition. That's the rule of law in South Dakota. That has been held by the Supreme Court in Tri-County versus Brule County, Tri-County Landfill versus Brule County, where the precedent set in there was a condition is required. That's a condition. Now, the administrative rules, which this governing body would go through at that first meeting, ones that are applicable here and most pertinent is seventy-four twenty-seven, oh seven, oh two, which applies to any person in any aspect of the management of solid waste, storing, disposing of solid waste. Under twenty-seven, I'm just gonna go through the last few laws. Eight oh four, the applicant shall comply with all applicable state, federal, and local laws and ordinances. Under seventy-four twenty-seven, oh nine, oh two, regarding the permit application instructions, all applicants must file a permit application with the county commission of the county in which the proposed facility is to be located. One copy to the municipality. In addition, they are required to notify adjacent property owners of the application amendment. Here, however, the city has never provided a copy of any of its applications, two thousand eight, and all the consecutive permits that were, or applications that were submitted in twenty fourteen, twenty twenty-one to this governing body. Nor have they ever provided notice to any adjacent property owners when it initially requested first authorization as required by seventy-four twenty-seven, oh nine, oh two. Seventy-four twenty-seven, oh nine, oh five, regards renewals and amendments. This application for an amendment particularly shall include all information required by seventy-four twenty-seven, oh nine, oh three, and a four that has not been submitted before the effective date of the rules. Any changes in the operation or other changes since a previous permit was issued must be included in their application. Particularly irrelevant here is seventy-four twenty-seven, oh nine, oh three, which means what entails the application contents. They must include complete information as required in this whole section. Part of what is required is under one L, subsection one L, is a certificate of compliance with local requirements. M, one M, is a resolution by this governing body. That's pursuant and congruent with thirty-four A six, one oh three, I just went through. Third, one O, other department permits required and their status. Going back to nineteen ninety-three, the city and the D N R knows how to process an amendment. One exception is required here is the commissioner's approval by official resolution. City notices it's required. Here's the nineteen ninety-three. This one was for the section nineteen, property only. In addition with the presentation or the request before the county commission, it has to also go through the city common council. And that did that. The council put ten stipulations on that. This was for a use on review, which is according to city ordinances for solid waste disposal site. Significant changes in the use or impacts on adjacent land uses as determined by the planning director shall require an amendment to this use on review. The last use on review submitted, which is in the record, was in two thousand one, prior to the city's purchase of this hundred and six acre site. Now, I'm just gonna go briefly through this. This is the conditional uses under the city county or city ordinance, which allows solid waste disposal sites. Within this, it gives out all the information of what the city is required to do. Particularly here, permit shall be approved for the property and not for the use by the original applicant only. In other words, a use on review runs with the land, not with the owner. Hundred and six acres was a hundred, totally separate land site that had never been considered or permitted before. The city's O two twelve permit carried until October of two thousand seven. And this covered section nineteen property only. However, it was allowed to permit, it was permitted to allow to operate all these types of wastes and landfill activities and operations for section nineteen only. Here's a permit, O two twelve permit, section nineteen only, expired on two thousand seven. Within that permit, condition one oh, one point oh five, states, must contact, operator must contact the D N R Waste Management Program to request a permit amendment prior to any significant deviation in design or operation of the facility and before any expansion beyond the permitted site boundaries. Bear in mind, section nineteen-three-hundred-and-forty-five acres was what was permitted. It may be reopened and amended following proper administrative procedures to include appropriate requirements under seventy-four twenty-seven, thirty-four A six. I just went through the pertinent rules and state law that qualifies here. Any permit modifications shall be in compliance with those and applicable federal regulations. Condition one point oh four, within the O tier twelve permit. If the provisions of the laws, rules, or revenue conditions of the permit are violated, D N R Waste Waste Management Program may take action to suspend or revoke this permit as provided under thirty-four A six, one point two one. In two thousand six, excuse me, four years into the ten-year moratorium, city sought to permit the hundred and six acres. However, how it did it was through a renewal process. They were also seeking to renew their O two twelve permit. However, when they submitted the application, they did it as a renewal, and they added the hundred and six acres with a comma. They were requesting, excuse me, all of these types of solid waste, landfill activities, disposal, waste tires, yard waste, construction and demolition debris, and household waste, which is signified as municipal solid waste. City identifies a surface water discharge permit. And there were other, the other permit was the biosolids composting permit. The D N R conducted a checklist review based upon the all the administrative rules and state laws. But they did it by a renewal process.
Ms. Johnson, just want you to be aware, you have your twelve minutes of your fifteen minutes at this point.
Thank you. Here's the, here's the one oh three, already permitted. Not applicable for permit application. Certified mail. Here's where the D N R put it, that it was going to be added and that it was gonna be considered as a buffer. Bear in mind, this is in two thousand eight, and that buffer time period within that ten-year period existed. Within there is also the compliance, certification of compliance. The record shows it didn't submit anything until twenty seventeen, and this was on the section nineteen only. section nineteen only. Nothing. This is twenty-seventeen, nine years after the permitting. The DNR did question it. City notified all the other government entities, but in two thousand and six, they said there's no significant changes since their last renewal. During the inspection and the consideration by the DNR, Bonnie Callman from the DNR encouraged the city to need to look for a new landfill site. Lack of liners, problems with the- with the- with the landfill already as it is. But despite the lack of liner expressed by Callman, they issued the permit anyway with no restrictions. In two thousand and thirteen, when the A permit was set up to expire, city submitted an application. Here is section thirty only. But in the permit that was issued, they added- the DNR added the section thirty and the section nineteen. City's surface water discharge permit for composting encompasses the section nineteen only. Although the O eight permit included composting, anything, had no restrictions whatsoever. Permit- and then in two thousand and thirteen, when they issued the two thousand and fourteen permit, the DNR allowed the city disposal of construction, demolition, re-compost, petroleum count, and landfill, other landfill operations. That's open-ended. What does that mean? This is the compost that in- it's been disposed of in windrows, twenty-twenty. And the twenty-one. Here's the hundred and six acres. Bar pit where they've been excavating soils and span approximately forty acres. Yard waste composting windrows. Our property is down to the south here, which this landfill drains into. South tributary, the nineteen seventy-nine landfill drainage basin design plan, which is associated not only with the city in combination with the county. It talks about the discharge percentage in this plan, recognize the potential for flooding is very high within the landfill tributary, south tributary. Refers to figure eleven. Here's a hundred and six acres. Here's the binding for the tributary floodplain.
Ms. Johnson, I'd just ask you to wind it up in the next thirty seconds.
Okay. Here's before two thousand and six. Okay. In two thousand and eighteen, city intentionally discharged containers on our property. They cut through this road, came down onto our property. This is our property. Clearing to twenty nineteen. DNR states basically it was simply soil. Does that look like soil? Eastern part of the section hundred and six acres, that were- there was settlement something. Twenty thirteen, city, city commenced construction on a hundred and six acres without any permits, proper permitting.
Ms. Johnson, your time is up on that. Appreciate the information, just so the commission's aware. Uh, and I'm going to call on, we've got somebody for the city attorney's office that would like to speak to this for a bit, but we also have a number of people on Zoom that are with State of South Dakota. We have Steve Kropf, Waste Management, Brett Steers, Surface Water, Jim Went, Waste Management and Surface Water, at least those three and maybe others that are on Zoom that have been able to listen to this. We also have Stacy Titus from Rapid City Public Works, and now I call on Carla Cushman from the city attorney's office to come forward as she would like to make a statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carla Cushman with the city attorney's office. I'll just briefly respond to some of the allegations here. I'd first like to point out that the Rapid City Solid Waste Facility is a valuable resource to our community. It serves a large portion of this area, including many, many residents of Pennington County. We serve the cities of Hill City, Box Elder, New Underwood, Ellsworth Air Force Base, lots of small towns in the area bring their- their solid waste to our facility. And for that reason, we've invested millions and we're continuing to invest millions in I would like to just respond to a couple of things that Ms. Johnson said. I just want to clarify that one hundred and six acres, the city added that into its permit in two thousand and six, I believe is what she said, not to dispose of municipal solid waste on it, but to perform other activities that support the landfill on it. To this day, they have not disposed of municipal solid waste on the one hundred and six acres. To do so would trigger the additional review from the state, additional information from the city. That kind of an expansion would, is not undergone easily. And the city has not done that, and so we're- we're using the one hundred and six acres in accordance with our permit. One of the screenshots that flashed up quickly said, talked about the restriction of how we can use this. I'd just like you to know that it says that we cannot dispose of municipal solid waste on this one hundred and six acres, but we are allowed certain activities. And the city maintains that the things that we are doing on that one hundred and six acres are allowed by the permit. I believe that the state agrees with that. And at such time as we need, we would like to expand the landfill onto this one hundred and six acres, we will go through the necessary steps to do so. She spent some- Ms. Johnson spent some time on the county approval, and I just wanted to explain the city's position on this. The- there is a statute that says that new permits and first authorization of a general permit do need to come to the county commission for their review and approval. It used to say any application to the- to the state for a solid waste permit, including a renewal application needed the input of the county. It doesn't say that anymore. It says a new permit or a first authorization of a general permit. And what I've learned in researching is that a general permit is not actually a general permit. It's a specific permit. And the city has a type one facility solid waste permit. We don't have a general permit. So that statute, and if you wanted to talk to me separately, I could geek out on the legality of it, but it's our position, and I believe your attorney's office agrees that that statute doesn't- doesn't apply to renewal permits or even amendments of permits on existing landfills. And I can answer more questions about that if you'd like. Just to sum up, Stacy Titus is here. He's our Assistant Public Works Director and knows a lot about what happens out there. I'd just like to say that, just to clarify, the city is, believes, and it will maintain in every forum that the Johnsons seek out, that we are operating in compliance with the substantial federal, state, and local laws that apply to the work that we're doing out there. And we are also operating in compliance with our permit. And we will continue to maintain that, and I'm available for questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Oster.
I have two questions, if you don't mind.
Okay.
You made a statement about the change in the law for the any application versus it. I don't remember the terms that you used, but when did that change? When did that wording change?
I have it right here. Nineteen ninety-six.
Nineteen ninety-six.
Yep.
And the other question I have is, you talked about they're not using, the city's not using the one hundred and six acres for any disposal of waste or anything of that nature?
Municipal solid waste disposal. Yep.
Right. So unless I read something wrong, didn't the, didn't the, all the, what's the word I'm looking for? All the steps to put on garden? What's that word?
Composting.
Yes. Didn't that all just get moved over there?
The final product is moved over there, and that's in- that's in allowance with our permit. Our permit says that we can, um, store, store compost product on the one hundred and six acres. We're not allowed to do the actual composting there, but we can store it there when it's complete, and that's, that is allowed by the permit.
But didn't- do y'all not have those compost windrows that are out there that are breaking down for compost as well? And maybe I'm just misunderstanding how the process works, but.
I'll defer to the engineer.
Okay, thanks.
Stacy Titus, Assistant Public Works Director. The product you see is a finished product. It is any product that a customer can come to the solid waste facility, buy, purchase, take home to their garden, or take out onto their acreage, is a finished product. The product you see there is a finished product. We're utilizing it as a facility to do on soil stabilization, things like that. So it's a finished product. The actual process of making compost is not allowed on the hundred and six acres. We make that on the three hundred and forty-five acre. And so that process is in that permit that it has to be made on that property, but we can store a finished product on the hundred and six acres. That's allowed.
Okay.
Chairman.
Mr. Head Governor.
Couple of things. So the permit that I have is nineteen ninety-three, so after nineteen ninety-three, where the Board of Commissioners had to sign off on it, that's no longer a rule.
That's correct. The legislature, for some reason, changed the law.
And so when we do an amendment, or you guys do an amendment on the hundred and six acres, you ended up not having to go through us, but you just went and did a renewal process. When did you do that renewal process with adding the hundred and six acres, did you say?
I believe that Ms. Johnson said it happened in two thousand and six. I'd have to go back and check. We have renewal permits every five years, so.
Okay. So a renewal, is that different than a amendment?
Yes, I believe it is. Perhaps the people on the line from the state could explain the difference, if you'd like to know.
So you didn't just put, as Ms. Johnson said, a comma, hundred and six acres added to the renewal process? You actually did the amendment?
No, we did- we did a renewal, but I think it's important to note that we didn't add this area to our permit to conduct the disposal of municipal solid waste on that property. That is, that is an amendment that would trigger the reviews, the extensive sampling of the property, a lot of technical work to demonstrate that that would be appropriate use of the property.
Okay. And then on the surface water and the flooding that had happened, Stacy, was that in two thousand and eighteen, or when was the flooding that was on Ms. Johnson's land?
I believe it was a large storm event that happened, I believe, in twenty twenty when there was significant rainfall that occurred. I believe it was twenty twenty when that happened.
I think, Stacy, I have the documentation and the pictures of twenty eighteen. And then, when did you put the compost in the drainage areas?
Compost has been there for quite a while. I would have to actually talk to operations about when that was placed.
Why I'm saying that is because, because of drainage, you already know, and the city has told me over and over again, the drainage that comes onto somebody else's land, including our planning, basically, it becomes your problem. When you're- you're the problem that's draining, you're the, the surface water is draining onto somebody else's land, whether it be city, county, Deb, or whoever, right? It becomes something that is officially the problem of the city if it drained on one of our county residences, is what I'm saying.
Well, that is classified as overland flow in this basin. So the wattle has the rights to continue to flow like it has done for a hundred years in that area. We don't have to contain it, confine it. What we do have to do is make sure that the SWIP plans and the stabilization and soil are in compliance so that we're not transporting soils and other issues onto somebody else's property.
But if they have pictures of your basin or your drainage going onto their land, that's showing basically that, like you said, maybe it was a storm event, but you also have flood plain in that area, you also have a creek in that area, right? You're putting compost that, are you guys still selling compost?
We're still selling compost. That compost was not placed there for sale. That compost was placed there as a erosion control measure and stabilization measure. I am not aware of compost that's leaving our site in the drainages and getting on the Johnsons' property. I am not aware of soil, and there was a, the state came out and took a look at that event. That event was outside the parameters of the SWIP in that the storm event was larger than what the SWIP permits say you need to contain and confine. So in that case there, it was a discharge that was a larger than normal event, and I can't remember if it's a twenty-year storm or a five-year storm. I'd have to talk to the state. They'd be better versed on that.
Why I'm saying that, Stacy, is if, if the city's draining onto, whether it be hers or anybody else, it might be an event in one sense, but the other, if you're looking at compost, or you're not compost, but whatever you're calling it, it's, if you look at the drainage area, I don't know if there's contamination or what's going on with the drainage, but you have brown grass going from your, your drainage area all the way onto their property. And if that was back in, what, a few years ago? I know there was some issues with some contamination or something that the city had to clean up. What, what was that?
I am not aware of any contamination leaving our site that's getting on the Johnsons' property. I am aware of that there was some soil that we cleaned up, vines and sediment as a result of that drainage, and we went down and cleaned that material up. It was along the fence line in one drainage, but I'm not aware of any contaminants as far as constituents go of municipal solid waste, or petroleum, or any of the other items that have been mentioned that have left our site. I'm not aware of them on our site either.
So on the fence line, so all those areas that that, that drainage or that area that you said you had to clean up is on a fence line that is owned by the Bern Johnson? So you're telling me it contained just to the fence line? And it didn't go past that, Stacy?
I am not aware of anything that has left our property. I would defer to the state when they went and took a look at it to see if there was items, we would be happy to clean it up. Would have cleaned it up. I am not aware of that.
Okay. I guess it, to me, why I'm saying that is it becomes, for me, a county issue if, it doesn't matter, like I said, if it's Cindy, if, or Cindy, if it's Holly or anybody, if that is going onto somebody else's or the county's property, whether it be a county personally or a county constituent, then that's why I said the surface water, because there's flood plain, and you already know, Stacy, I've been doing this even with the city, not, not, this isn't personal for me, for the city. It's just that that water, not only from city coming down onto somebody else's property, we've had that in the past from the city as a county in a couple of different areas, and they told us it was our problem. So I truly believe when you're telling the county it's our problem, and it's from a city contributory or a development, in a sense, that it is, for me, it does make a difference. And if that's what's happening, to me, by the pictures, that's what it looks like's happening, from the city coming down in their drainage area onto a county constituent's property. That's my opinion. That is not attorney's opinion. That's not. It's just from all the pictures and what I've seen in the past, and I've looked at many drainage areas. In fact, I, I'm interested in that kind of stuff. It truly looks like it. Maybe the, the people, I don't know if it's who it is that, that looked at that area and said it just stopped at the fence line. That would be pretty unreal if a drain had just decided to stop right at the fence line and not go past a certain area unless you bermed it right just before the fence line and it just stayed there. So I understand some of her, her frustration with some of this, being by the landfill. It's something truly we do need in Rapid City and Pennington County, the surrounding areas, and I'd hope that we could resolve this in that if there is any flooding or anything that's happening, or we are, as the, as the city is adding to some of their compost, supposedly it has petroleum, different stuff in it, that those, I think she had just read what you guys had made it. I had talked to a city council person. For some reason, they told me that, but I didn't check, that you weren't selling anymore because you were having problems with a lot of plastics and stuff in it. So I can honestly say, Stacy, without being hopefully rude, I put it on my property and it did have a lot of plastics and stuff in it, and I couldn't grow the grass. So if that's being bermed, if that's being bermed above that, there is some solids in it, in a sense, with plastics and different stuff. I don't know if that does anything. I'm not an expert. Maybe we could have somebody talk about some of that burning. Uh, maybe we could have somebody talk about, uh, some of that burning, some of that compost, and that it doesn't affect anything, eh, on that drainage area, because it's all over that, that hundred and six acres that are ours, already coming down on Fern's property. So if it's not doing anything, I'm good. But when's the last time we had tested in twenty-one? Because we, I know you guys had some issues in twenty. Is there any documentation on twenty-one and twenty-two that everything on those areas are good now?
We have an active SWIP, and our SWIP is in compliance. We are meeting the requirements as stated in the SWIP plan. Uh, that is not a permanent or permitted discharge location for the city. So we don't have any monitoring requirements for that discharge because it's not a, um, part of our permitted outfalls. Uh, doesn't mean that we don't have a SWIP plan to, um,
Mediate it.
Protect the transport of soil and things like that. Um, regarding your compost, the one you're referring to is what's called, um, our MSW, which was a bio solids combo product that we are no longer producing. What the photos there showed was a wood chip product, which is wood chips. Um, so technically, it, it's not compost either. It's an allowed product. It's a wood chip product.
Do you put any chemicals or anything else on, or are they just plain wood chips? There's nothing else in the wood chips? It's just wood chip?
It's no different than what happens out on the national forests where they chip the timber sales. That's the product that's you're seeing in most of the photos. But I will say, we have placed compost there too. I'm not going to say that compost isn't placed on there, the finished product.
Okay.
And that would include grass clippings and things like that in it, as well as the wood chips.
I would, uh, I would like to ask, uh, the representatives from DA and R. Uh, I don't think they have planned on making a statement, but there may be some clarification or some, uh, questions that you can respond to, and I'm not sure exactly who to call on, uh, but since there's two Steves, I'll call on Steve.
This is Steve Crop from DA and R. Um, if you have questions, please ask.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Luster.
I would like some clarification on something that they talked about, the process that they went through, the amendment process versus the renewal process, and maybe State DA and R can explain that one. Um, I know for, from the county's perspective, and I'm just going to draw on some limited knowledge here, uh, whenever we have a, a mine that wants to expand, they have to get a new permit, whenever they're expound, expanding their boundaries to operate. Um, is that not the same, you wouldn't consider that a, a, an amendment application that we require a, a new application to expand those boundaries? Because from what I'm understanding, they applied for the expansion to the one oh six through a renewal process rather than an amendment process, and I just want to make sure I understand that, that, that process more clearly.
In their permit renewal application, they did ask to include, uh, the hundred and six acres in within the permitted boundary of the landfill. And so they're required to provide additional information that has not been previously submitted. So they, um, in essence amended their permit renewal application by providing us with additional information. Permit amendments are usually issued during the term of a, of a permit, not during renewal process.
That answer your question, Commissioner Luster?
That answers my term. I'm just writing down the notes on that. So just out of curiosity then, there's no requirement for the county to, to give that joint statement based on the renewal process then?
Correct.
Any other questions of, uh, State DA and R or the city? I am going to give the Johnsons a couple of minutes for, uh, clarify if they, uh, didn't agree with some of the statements that were made.
Commissioner Adcock.
So Steve, on the, the property, the hundred and six acres, was that where the issue was with the, um, basically, what do you call it? Uh, surface water issues that, um, had some issues with the DNR, and they had to come out, I think it was twenty eighteen, because there were some violations on some of the area? Was that because of surface water discharge? Or why did the DNR, um, come out on the issue? Uh, like I said, I don't remember. Fern, do you remember if it was the, maybe you can explain it better? When Rapid City had some issues, was it the surface water, or was it the birmingham, or was it? Can you answer that better than me? Because I know, I have to hear things twice, and all I did was, I listened to you, and then I tried to read some of this, and this is a book about.
Are you referring to the unlawful, unauthorized discharge in twenty eighteen?
Yes.
When the city cut through the road and dumped the containment pond from the, from the stormwater runoff, from where they were, um, storing and fueling and maintaining equipment?
Right.
From the borrow site where they were contaminating, cross-contaminating, taking soil from their borrow site, uh, over to, for daily cover of their, uh, active cells and their non-friable and friable asbestos pits, back and forth, all of that area there. All that drainage came down into that area in twenty eighteen, and that's what flooded onto our property. But the real point here is, is the city has a surface water discharge permit, which allows discharge from three outfalls, and I went through that real quick. Um, they don't have any coverage on the hundred and six acres, but yet they discharged.
So Steve, are, did you understand what Fern said? So that's when you guys came out is because of the, the, what was happening on the hundred and six acres? Is that where the violation was?
I will defer to Kelly Buscher of our Surface Water Quality. I work specifically with police management questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Uh, good, good morning, Commissioner. My name is Kelly Buscher. I'm the Administrator of the Surface Water Quality Program within DNR. Um, we did go out and investigate the concerns that, um, Ms. Johnson is speaking to today in, in twenty eighteen. And what we found was that there had been a, a pond in that area that had been breached that was used for stormwater controls. Um, it, the, the storm event was a very large event. Our, our permitting requires that you have controls in place to handle the two-year, twenty-four-hour storm event, which is about a two-inch rainfall event, give or take across the state. Um, that rainfall event was substantially larger than that, that two inches. And so we, we don't require people to design to Noah's flood, if you will. And when we went out and looked at it, we didn't see violations of the permit with regard to that. What we did see was a drainage issue, and the department does not have any authority over drainage flows, um, throughout the state. That's a local government issue.
Okay. So it was the, and I guess that was my point, is the drainage flows that are going onto other people's land, but you also said, you know, things are going to happen with, you know, a hundred-year event or a, event that isn't more than, um, two inches of rain at a time. So I understand that things happen, but it also flooded on, when that drainage event happened, with those contaminants and the things that were in this pond that got breached, went onto somebody else's land. So, um, for county, we do, like you said, we do, um, try to take care of the drainage. We try to work with the city on some of the drainage, but that's why I'm here today with Fern and have talked to Fern, because, again, it doesn't matter who it is, if it's city, county, or whoever, if you're draining your, your property, whether it was an accident or it was a hundred-year event, there stood, still should be something that, um, I don't know if the word's propagate, or, or help these people with some of this drainage that has caused some issues. Um, so, um, if it is regulated by the county, maybe we need to go out and look at some of the, the drainage and some of the things, um, that have occurred in the past and make sure they are not occurring in the future on this property. Again, there's flood plain there, uh, there's creek, there's all kinds of different things. It's not just for Fern's, uh, Ms. Johnson's, uh, um, to make her land good. These, this creek and these areas are also, uh, areas that come into Ca- uh, Pennington County. So, and her land, uh, Ms. Kelly, is in Pennington County, and that's why today I have concerns on some of the drainage. The permitting, it looks like it has changed. Uh, Ms. Shelkey has told us that. What's your name again? I'm.
Cushman.
Cushman. Shelkey is Michelle from your CBD. Um, so Ms. Cushman has said, so I understand the permitting has changed, but, uh, my current, my concerns will keep being the drainage, uh, in the county, and it, and like I said, when it comes to, uh, some of the infrastructure, some of the things in, in not just this development, but from city or anybody else onto county land, uh, this is a pretty big issue if, um, these requirements aren't being met, or if some of this stuff has happened under a property that we should, uh, try to mitigate some of this in a, hopefully in a more solution manner, instead of through a, uh, lawyers, so.
Anything further you'd like to?
I do have some rebuttal.
Okay.
Please, thank you. Just while it's fresh in your mind with county drainage, there is a county drainage ordinance that requires, um, surface water permit coverage under the county ordinance for discharge, and it also requires that through the DA and R. It's very explicit under your county ordinance. Next, um, Ms. Cushman, Ms. Cushman addressed that, and Mr. Crop addressed that, they can do an amendment? Well, the permit condition, and you must follow permit conditions, which states here that prior to any amendment before an expansion, that an application amendment must be submitted, and according to the rules and the laws.
Ms. Fern, did that change? I think Ms. Cushman said that that had changed in nineteen ninety-six.
But this is a permit condition, okay? This has not changed. It's in the city's oh eight permit, it's in the city's oh two permit, it's in the fourteen permit, it's in the twenty twenty-one permit. That condition has not changed because this rule has not changed.
Mr. Chairman, and if I can point out, that's actually not codified law. That is, what is this?
Administrative rules.
This is administrative rules. So it's a difference. So if the codified law was changed, but the rules stayed the same, they promulgated rules that said this still has to happen.
But let's address the nineteen ninety-six, uh, change in thirty-four A six, one oh, one oh, uh, three. That was nineteen ninety-three. One oh three point one was changed in nineteen ninety-six. So regardless, in two thousand and six, when the city requested expansion of the hundred and six acres to their permitted property, to the permitted boundary, um, the nineteen ninety-six under one oh three point one was in effect. So, you know, I don't understand their argument where it doesn't apply here, um, because within the administrative rule seventy-four, twenty-seven, oh nine, oh three, and I went through those three sections there, it requires county approval.
So does Steve have an answer for me, because it's changed to administrative, that if administrative is different than what DNR does? Um, that's the difference, is that DNR doesn't do it, but through, um, administrative rules, that the?
Mr. Crop, did you hear the question?
I did.
You did or you didn't?
I, I did. I did hear her question.
Do you have a response to that?
Not at this time.
Okay. Anything further, Ms. Johnson?
I do.
I'm, I'm going to say we're, we're down to a couple of minutes here.
Okay. Well, um, they talk about a SWIP plan, their current SWIP plan. That was modified in twenty nineteen. The, the previous one, while we were complaining about all this, was dated nineteen ninety-nine. So for twenty years, they operated the existing section nineteen and the hundred and six acres under that old SWIP plan, which does not contain all the requirements that the surface water discharge program requires. And even when they were sent that in, it had to be modified.
But Ms. Fern. Um, Chairman, can I ask you a question? Please. Um, so here's the bottom line. So supposedly, the only flooding on your land was from the hundred-year basically event, because they had some, and I do remember, there was some major water coming and raining in Rapid City, and I don't think even you guys could, or these guys could even control some of that. That's, that's something that's unheard of, doesn't happen very often. Have you had other times where you've had drainage like that, um, coming from the landfill onto your property, besides that event that they're talking about?
Not that I'm aware of. We purchased the land in, adjacent to the hundred and six acres in twenty thirteen. Um, but the whole point of it is, is that, uh, a person can, uh, you know, you can drain through a stream, which is where this is coming from, through and onto our property and throughout into Rapid Creek. So it goes further than our property. Um, but with the city, um, dumping pollutants, that's draining from their, their hundred and six acres, where contrary to what they assert, they are disposing solid waste. See, they were permitted in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen to dispose solid waste in the form of C and D, which is construction and, and demolition debris.
Okay.
Yard waste, petroleum contaminated soil. So when we requested in twenty eighteen, the DNR did not come out and inspect for a month later. City didn't make any repairs until two days before this, the DNR came out to inspect. We repeatedly asked for the DNR to, um, require a testing being done on our so, on our soil property. Um, they refused. So three years later, we did it ourselves professionally, and within certain areas, we, um, tested areas not affected by the flooding, and we tested areas that were it pooled. And those areas reflected, um, above two hundred ppm, parts per million. Standard, I believe, is a hundred. So if that was in twenty twenty-one, what was it in twenty eighteen?
Okay. I appreciate that. I just didn't know, so that there was flooding that once, which, you know, it's kind of something that, you know, you can't control to a certain extent. But with the contaminants, I, legally, I'm not going to say that, because you've tested it, I have, you know, you've told me that, that that's, that's, you know, something that, at this point, you already know, Fern, you're probably going to go, um, visit this in a different area besides county and city. So, um, I appreciate you coming today. Um, I appreciate all the information that you have shared with us. Um, on the application, um, it wasn't answered, uh, if it was federal, um, that was D and R, or state, it was D, it's called DA and R, I think, now. Um, but I still not understanding the administrative part that hasn't been answered. So, um, again, Fern, I don't know what we could do much today about this, but I'll be investigating a little bit further on some of this as well, so.
Well, under statute seven, eight, twenty, subsection one, this county has authority to enforce civil action, and under thirty-four, uh, eleven, two, one, we are a grieved party that's been injured, not only by our stat, our constitutional procedure on due process notice that has been violated, but we've had injury to our property.
Ms. Johnson, we, we appreciate you being here. Thank you for DA and R, for weighing in. Thank you for the city of Rapid City being here. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Stacy and Ms. Cushman.
I take a, uh, motion for a five-minute break.
So move.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor, indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
opposed. Motion carried. Take a motion to return to rigor session.
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Items from the auditor, Cindy.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. And what we have before you this morning is a resolution adopting the decent, decennial revision of the commission districts and voting precincts. I would ask approval of that resolution so that we can get it published.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the resolution adopting decennial revision of commission districts and voting precincts. Um, is there any discussion? Any public comment in regard to this? All those in favor of the motion indicate with a sign aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Items from the sheriff, Kevin Tone.
Good morning, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff. Um, and Cindy can help explain this probably better than me. We're just moving the funds that they had from their sales or surplus items, um, out of general funds into their equipment reserve for future purchases of equipment. It's a fund that commission created a couple of years ago, so just looking for approval to do that.
Very good. Is there any public comment? Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lekrue.
Moved place nineteen, oh, no, sorry. Moved to approve the resolution adopting the decennial revision of commission.
Nope.
No. It is, I was on the right. Moved to place nineteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight into the unassigned. Moved to place 19,998 into the assigned reserve for research, search and rescue.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Items for equalization, Shannon.
We're having a good day now, Shannon.
I thought I was the long presentation today. So Shannon Ripper, Director of Equalization, first thing is, on the agenda, we have an abatement application. This comes from my office, and, uh, this is sort of an error on the part of our office. Property owner, uh, applied, submitted an application for the owner occupied classification, but it appeared that he didn't own the property. Well, he had purchased and moved into the property, but didn't record the deed till later. Well, initially, we, uh, we said, you don't own the property. Well, later on, quite a while later, he brings back a copy of the deed and, uh, the date on the deed, he owned it and moved in.
So Chairman.
Qualifies.
Commissioner Edgar.
Motion to move the abatement application from tax year 2021 for parcel 65172 Jeff Buck 94678.
Second, not motion. Second. Commissioner Roskinak. Uh, any public comment? Back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion to abate, uh, indicate with saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item B.
Okay. So I've got a presentation on, uh, how the rising real estate markets can affect property taxes. And I've actually done different forms of this several times, trying to get out in the public as much as I can. Uh, a lot of this, I'm gonna skim through, uh, fairly quickly because you understand it. Um, I'm gonna talk about, uh, the tax process, uh, how the rising market affects the, the levies and taxes collected, and then I'm gonna talk about, um, some specifics of what happened with our assessment, uh, on different types of properties. And then at the end, what I don't have here is, uh, mention of growth. So I was, I was asked to address that, all kinds of gossip going around the courthouse here, about where we're at for growth, and we'll talk about that when I get to the end. I've, uh, changed a couple of slides. I was asked to put some real numbers in instead of just examples, and when I get to those, I'll tell you, uh, what those are. But we'll go through my, my example with, uh, the fake numbers, and then, uh, it'll be obvious when we get to the new ones. So the steps in the process, I'm gonna go through this fairly quickly. The first step in the tax process is to appraise or assess all property at full market value. And I've been asked a couple of times, what happens with, if our market goes down? We're in an up market and have been for quite a few years. If our market goes down, we will lower assessed values because we're supposed to be assessed at market value every year, whether our market goes up or down. So we, we can lower assessed values if our market goes down. We mail out assessment notices, and then we do the appeal process, which we're in the middle of right now, and then the commission approves or denies all applications for exemptions. I got a question from the city council a few nights ago, uh, about that process, uh, that it's not an automatic, that people have to actually apply for an exemption, and there is a notice published in the newspaper of everybody that's made an application, so the public knows who's asking for an exemption. Because nobody from the public ever attends these meetings where the commission acts on this. But once we've done that, then we know what the total taxable value is. We know the total valuation that we can collect tax from. We're not quite there yet, we've got to get through the appeal process and the exemptions, and then we'll know that total value. The next step, all of the taxing entities, the county, the city, the school, the road districts, everybody, has to hold budget hearings and set their budgets. An important thing to remember as we go through this is not, uh, not every taxing entity has a budget that's made up entirely of property tax. We're talking about property tax here, but for the county, it's, I think, 60% of the county's budget. For the city, I think it's less than half. The city has a lot of, uh, sales tax, the county gets money from other sources as well. Okay? But all of those taxing entities, all of them, have to set their budgets. Once we know the total taxable value, we can take tax from, and all of the taxing entities have set their budgets, we know how much tax we're gonna take, the levy is just the mathematical factor that gives us that. That's calculated at the end of the year, we print and we mail the tax bill, and we collect taxes the following year in South Dakota.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So let's go back to number one, Shannon. You appraise all the properties. Why don't we re, refresh our memory, when you appraised those properties, you're using market evidence.
Yes.
Market evidence is from confirmed sales. And if I recall, you can, you go back two years, three years, and there's been a lot of sales, been a lot of crazy sales. So how do you, you might explain to us, oh, you say, uh, this one's no good, uh, we'll use this one, because this is the information that you're using to actually come up with the numbers, that people come in and they don't like, and they go through the field process, and we say, what don't you like about it? Here's the market evidence. So that market evidence, to me, is the most critical part of that whole, uh, step right there.
Okay. So ignoring ag property, which is assessed based on productivity formula in South Dakota and not sales, all non-ag property is appraised at market value using, uh, sales information or using market information. State law requires that we consider all three approaches to value, sales comparison approach, the cost approach, and the income approach to value. We create a model to value large groups of properties. We have to appraise over 50,000 properties every year. We can't do that, uh, like Commissioner Roskinak does, one at a time. Uh, so we have to, uh, we have to create a valuation model, a mathematical formula that represents the market, and we calibrate that model with sales information. The sales information that we use is every open market transaction in Pennington County. Open market means something that it wasn't offered to you by your grandmother and you were the only one in on it. Okay? If it was advertised and open and available to anybody to purchase, that's an open market sale, and we use all of those. We consider all of those, but then in our models, we will also identify the extreme outliers, high and low sales. You know, our market isn't perfect. People purchase properties not based on a formula. Uh, there's life situations that, uh, go into a purchase, and that influences what somebody pays or what somebody accepts as a sale price. And sometimes those life situations, things we can't measure, skew prices. So there's always that one sale that's higher, much higher than any other property, and lower, okay? Happens at both ends. So the models we use, we tend to look for the majority of the sales in the middle, because market value by definition is what, uh, property would most likely sell for. So we do exclude, uh, some of those extreme highs and lows when we calibrate our models.
I just wanted everybody to be aware that, you know, that, uh, your, your office is pretty diligent about, hey, this is a good sale, this is not a good sale, and going forward, that's all we got to rely on, is all that, uh, what people are out there willing to pay for property. And if they're willing to pay 50,000 more than it's listed for, then so be it, because maybe that's what the market is. But, uh, that's evidence that we have to use when...
Yep.
...you're building these models.
I get a question, a lot, or a comment, that my property's not up, uh, not for sale. Well, we're required to appraise all properties every year, whether your property's for sale or not. And the best evidence that we have of what it would sell for, if it were for sale, is what's already sold, and how much it sold for.
Thank you.
Okay. So the, the heart of this really is the taxing entities meet and they hold budget hearings, and they decide how much tax to collect based on the cost of performing whatever government services they perform, be it the county commission, or road district, or the city, or whatever. There are over 200 taxing districts in Pennington County, and all of them have to set budgets, how much money they're going to, which includes how much money they're gonna collect from property tax. Taxes are determined during these budget hearings. If our market were to drop, all of these taxing entities, the county, the city, the school, everybody, still has a cost to perform whatever services they perform. Whether our market goes up or down, we still have a budget we need to collect to pay for what we do.
So, I have a question, Chairman.
Commissioner Edgar.
So budget, you said 60% of our budget is property taxes. Are we talking total budget when you're doing, um, your taxable value levy request, taxable value mail levy? So are you taking the levy request based on full budgets, meaning the whole 109 million, or just 60%?
So I'd like to focus on the property tax portion of it. The, the next slide I get to is, uh, all the caps on how you can increase your budget. Cindy, the, the 3% cap, does that apply to the entire budget or just the property tax portion?
Property.
Just the property tax portion. So I, I'd like to focus on that. We have, 40% of our budget comes from somewhere else, and that can change however.
Right.
And the city, the same way, sales tax. They could have a lot more sales tax this year.
Right, because they're like, what, 17% of our budget for property tax and...
I don't know.
I think are 53, and we're 26%, so.
Our, our budget is 60% property tax, 40% all other sources. The city property tax is less than 50, I think.
I mean, just collected wise, when they portioned it out of that 100% of property tax, how it's distributed.
Okay.
I guess is what I'm...
On your property tax bill, uh, most of the taxes, I, I think about half maybe goes to the school.
Yeah.
And, uh, and then the county and the city split the other half, and all of the other taxing entities make up a smaller amount. Um, but most of it is the school, and I don't know the exact percentages of...
I think we're about 26%, and city's about 17, then there's other about 3%, so something like that.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Lasker.
I just wanna make sure I understand with, I kinda, I think I'm following you, but I just wanna make sure I'm getting this piece of it. As the market goes up, we, we equalize, and, and so the market goes up like this, and if we increase our budget to whatever it is, you know, every 3% every year, or whatever it is. If the market tanks, let's just say, and it goes down, because you mentioned that, you know, it could go down, if we're spending here and the values go down, that's when we would potentially see the inverse of the levy, where we would have to come up if we stayed at the same budget level, is that...
If you stayed at the same budget level, the levy would have to go up. Exactly.
Okay. I just, I just wanna make sure, if the market starts to go down, then we may have to either A, make cuts, or the levy's gonna go up, and that's when we're gonna see a significant cost to the landowner for property tax.
So what, um, what I'm gonna get to here is that that levy is just a mathematical result of the budget you set and the available taxable valuation that you have. And the levy can go up or down. The important thing is, is where are we gonna set the budget? And then this is how much taxable value we have. The levy's just what gives us that much tax, and we'll get to that a little bit. Okay. As far as budgets, all of you know this, your budgets, the property tax portion anyways, is capped at 3% or the Consumer Price Index, whichever's less. This year, we can raise the budget 3%. Okay? The Consumer Price Index is either 3% or something higher than that. So budgets this year can increase 3%. They can also increase for the amount of taxes that new property added to the tax roll pays. Okay? That is a brand-new house that didn't exist before is now paying taxes. But that just adds to the, the taxes that are collected. That new house that was built, paying taxes, when, when you raise the budget by that amount, it doesn't raise the levy for everybody else, because that's new money coming in. The 3%, that raises everybody's tax right there. The more new property we get, the more, more property we have sharing in the tax burden. But the more new property we get, the greater the demand on services, the more cops we need, the more fire, uh, fire trucks we need, all of that. And then the opt-out. You know what that is? An opt-out is, we're opting out of these budget caps.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
Uh, Shannon, do you guys track, when you say, uh, new growth, do you track that number? Is there a finite number that defines that new growth?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And when we get to the end of this, I'll talk about that.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. That's important to all of these taxing entities, how much new growth is, because you can only raise your budget 3% plus the new growth. So that's always important, what that growth is.
Thank you.
Okay. So here's the formula that shows the levy here, okay? And, and these are just, um, sort of fake numbers for the example, okay? Uh, the budget request, a million dollars. We're gonna collect a million dollars of property tax out of 70 million dollars of total taxable value. The levy is .014. That's just the number that gives us that much tax out of that much value. We hear a lot of city council, county commissioners across the state talking about what they did with the levy. You don't do anything with the levy. You set the budget request, the total taxable value is set by the real estate market, the levy's just the mathematical result, okay?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
So that example up there, that .014286, is that just the county's budget? Or in this example, could it be the county and the school and other, the total mail levy?
It was just fake numbers for an example.
Okay, I'm just, that seems pretty high, that's all.
Yeah. So we'll go through the fake numbers, then I'll give you some real ones. I had somebody in my office late yesterday afternoon ask for some real numbers.
We need.
Okay? So making it sort of real here, we had a million-dollar budget request with a total taxable value of 70 million, that's the levy we need. If the budget request goes up 3%, and we have an increasing real estate market and the total taxable value goes up 25%, this just shows the levy has to go down 17%. Because if the levy didn't go down, our market went up. If the levy didn't go down, there'd be too much money flow into the budget. Okay? The levy has to be reduced. Works the other way if our market went down. Now, this is a specific property. Okay? So we've got a $176,000 home, and the taxable value went up 25%. Now it's at $220,000. The levy went down. The tax is gonna increase 3%. Even though the value went up 25%, the tax is only going up 3% because the levy went down. And this is something that's important to property owners out there, because they're looking at assessment notices that are going up a lot, and they think their taxes are gonna go up the same amount. But in a year like we've experienced this year, and last year, but especially this year, our market is going up more than budgets can increase, the levy has to go down.
So Chairman. Two things. I thought yesterday we said that if assessment values, that could make their taxes, them pay more taxes, or by budgets. So what did you mean by assessment values? We were talking about, okay, if your house is 300,000, now it went up 20, 25%. I don't know what that is, I just said 350,000. So that's increased. So that doesn't change my assessed value, only because if the budget's, it can only change it by 3%? You see what I'm saying? I guess...
Yep. Because the, the levy has to go, we're not gonna use the same levy as we did last year.
Right.
So the levy went down, uh...
Last year.
The levy went down last year, the levy will go down this year, has to.
So how do I end up paying more taxes?
Well, you'll pay, in this example, 3% more.
So each time, so when they say, okay, my taxes increased between 15 and 25%.
Okay.
It doesn't do that. It just says, why do you put that on the tax bill? And then my taxes went up $50,000, and then you said, well, that didn't increase your taxes, the only, it, it did by 3%, but not by 15 to 25%. See what I'm saying?
So we, we had, uh, an email question that I think, uh, you forwarded to me.
Yes.
Okay. In that example, uh, the author of the email said his taxes went up 15% and 18%, I think.
Yes.
Well, I go, look at what his taxes changed, and his taxes changed 3% to 7% over several years. His assessment went up 15%, but be... His assessment went up fifteen percent, but because the levy went down, the taxes didn't increase fifteen percent.
But you said he couldn't go up three to seven percent, he could only go up three percent, I thought.
Th- this is a perfect example here, um, and this is a property, assuming this property increased at exactly the same percentage as the overall taxable value. If your property goes up more than the average, then the tax increase is going to be more than three percent.
In the.
Because your property went up more than the average of everything.
So that's why I'm saying, you can go up by the average because of your tax went up, right? Your assessment, fifteen to forty percent. And then also because of budgets, um, it's already at three percent, so they can be increased on their, how much they pay every year, more than three percent.
Depending.
That's what I'm saying.
Depending on
where the assessment.
How much their assessment went up.
Hey, that's what I mean. So I think it was more confusing that you, you could only go at three percent, even if it's fifteen to twenty-five. That's why I said, there's two, two things that make a difference. Your assess value, if it goes up, and then, uh, based on budget. So either way, you're going up basically three percent, right?
I- in this example, the total taxable valuation went up twenty-five percent, and so did this property. So the tax is going to increase three percent. If this property increased fifty percent in value, then the taxes are going to be a lot more than three percent.
I got one at sixty percent, sixty plus.
Yep.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
Shannon, what, uh, kind of an increase did we see in assessed valuation for two thousand twenty-two opposed to two thousand twenty-one?
We'll get to that.
Shannon, uh, go, go back, because, uh, when you say if, if your assessment went up far more than your tax is going to go up, but there has to be some underlying issues to that, do there not?
I- in this example, in my example, the, the total taxable valuation of the county increased twenty-five percent. If your property, your specific property increased at exactly that twenty-five percent, your tax can only increase three percent. But if your property went up fifty percent, more than double what every other property did, then your taxes are going to increase more than everybody else.
That would be like adding a garage, something very specific, uh, relative to.
Could, could be just too low last year. I mean, you know, we don't apply a blanket change to all properties. Some neighborhoods increase it more, uh, at higher rates than others. Uh, now, in this example, if your property, uh, increased at only ten percent, then your tax over there might not increase at all. It depends on how your property changes compared to the average overall.
Well, the problem out there is that the general public, because their assessed value went up thirty percent, they think their taxes are going to go up thirty percent. So this is what we're trying to convey to the general public that, uh, we're basically have to, everyone that comes to me and doesn't like their assessed value, I have to go through this example.
Yeah, and that's exactly it. Everybody assumes their taxes are going to go up the same percentage as their assessed value. If, if our market, like it has been in the past, is only increasing at three or four percent a year, that's probably true, because you can raise the budget by about that same amount. But our market is going up far more than what all of the taxing entities can raise their budgets. So what I tell people is, is your taxes will not increase the same amount as your assessed value did.
Oh, Shannon, cast good question. So if you're under twenty-five percent, basically, you're going to go up at least three percent, depending on how low you go.
May, maybe less, yeah.
Over twenty-five percent, you'll pay that increase at least of three percent. Plus, how do you know it, if it's forty or fifty percent, then how? It's not going to be, their taxes aren't going up fifty percent, but they're going up three percent plus what? How do you do that formula?
And I don't know that, because you haven't set your budgets yet, so I don't know where that levy is going to be yet.
So it's the three percent plus the levy?
Well, no, 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 can I answer that one? I think I've got this one down, because if we set our budget and it, we only increase our budget by two percent, that actually could be a two percent increase, not a three percent. It's all based on the amount of funds that we obligate in the budget. It comes down to that budget. What we set in saying that we're willing to spend, which we can't, we can't go any higher than three percent.
That's the under twenty-five percent amount?
Budget, 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 purely, what was our budget last year? What was the number that we, we operated off of? The one that this is impacting?
Forty-eight point five million, the property tax portion of your budget.
Got you. So if, if we only increased two percent, then their property value at twenty-five percent or less would only go up two percent. But if we take the full three percent grow, uh, that we're allowed to, then you would see that three percent increase on their property. Am I, am I explaining that right, Shannon?
Yep.
Okay, so but they're, they're starting, okay, let's just say, just use forty percent. It went up forty percent. What would be there, depending on our budget, if it was us, four point six eight eight, how much did you increase it then?
The, the best I can do is, uh, make a guess based on, uh, this year's levy.
Okay.
And I, I mean, and make a guess at it. I don't know, because I don't know what that next year's levy is going to be.
Well, guess on our levy that was last year at four point six.
I get back to you on that.
But what I'm saying is, because it, because it's confusing, because first you said below twenty-five percent, it was going to be at least three percent or whatever our levy was. But if it went over, then that would increase it because they, their percentage went up and we have to do it per that percentage. How much percentage if you're over that twenty-five percent, if you're forty, sixty percent?
Let's, let's say if it went to fifty percent, it'd be a six percent increase in your tax bill. Because it's double what the average is. And I doubt my math is right, but that's reasonably close.
Okay.
Let me throw this out there, because you're trying to keep it at the twenty-five percent to give us some examples.
Yes.
And there's some properties out there in our community, quite, quite a few, that were probably under, way undervalued. And then you have this come along with the market as it is, and that's where we get the, in my case, one comeback at sixty percent higher, because it was undervalued for so long.
Yep.
And, and plus with the increase, so, yeah, I am going to have to pay.
Lot more than that three percent, but not sixty percent more.
No.
It can't be.
No. But I see what Deb's getting at, is she's, but those numbers after the twenty-five percent, yes, they're going to have to pay more, but their property was probably undervalued for.
Yep.
Some years, some now there.
So not until school district, city, and the county establish their budgets, are you going to know that number?
Yeah, we don't know that, that's right. So what I tell people is, is you will pay more taxes next year, because commissioners are going to raise their budget. How much more, I don't know.
And Shannon, I just did quick numbers here, and if I did it right or wrong, I don't know. But roughly, a one percent increase is about five hundred thousand dollars. So if we only increased our budget from forty-eight point five million to forty-nine point four million, that would be a two percent increase. If we, if we increase our budget spending to forty-nine point nine, that would be a three percent increase. So it depends on what our end budget is going to be, is what that percentage is going to be, if I, if I'm understanding and following. So just everyone understands it.
And every taxing entity has to do that. Now, in this, I'm blaming the tax increase on you guys.
That's right.
Uh, later on, I'm going to tell you, you need to raise your budget.
But you increased the assessment, so you can be blamed for that. So Lloyd, you can blame Shannon.
Th- this is, uh, this is where I get into the new sheets that weren't in, uh, PowerPoint that was presented. It's exactly the same thing, just with some real numbers, okay? So our levy request, the auditor insists that I use proper language here. So our levy request, that I used to call budget, is forty-eight point five million, because it's the property tax portion of the budget. All right, that's what it was last year.
These are real numbers now?
Yes.
Sorry, okay.
Our total taxable value last year was ten point three billion, and then our mill levy is four point six eight eight, or point oh oh four six eight eight, okay? That is just the levy that gives us forty-eight million dollars in tax out of ten billion dollars worth of taxable value. Okay, that's, that's what our levy was last year. If we raise our levy request, ignoring the rest of the budget, okay? If we raise our levy request three percent, it would go to forty-nine point nine seven million. And it's looking like our, and we're not done with this yet, we've got to get through the appeal process and all that, but it's looking like our total taxable valuation is going to increase by about thirty-eight percent. Probably won't be that much, because we've got to get through the appeal process. But our total taxable value has gone up. That's what our real estate market has done, okay? If the levy request goes up three percent and our total taxable value increases thirty-eight percent, the levy has to go down. If the levy wouldn't go down, your budget would go up more than three percent. So we're looking at a fairly substantial drop in the levy. Last year, we had a drop in the levy. It's going to be a bigger drop this year.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin.
So where does the new growth come in, then Shannon, on this?
That is, uh, that's new property that's added to the tax roll, that's paying taxes. So you can increase that levy request even more. But that's part of that total taxable valuation. Uh, it's a wash when it comes to.
Okay, so it's included in the forty-nine seven?
It is, yes.
That was my question.
Okay, yeah, sorry.
You told us what the new growth was, or there wasn't?
Haven't. I'd like to get to the end of this, and then, then we'll talk new growth.
Can't you just add it with the CPI and new growth conversation?
Okay, so this is just a specific property, again, sa- same slide as before. If the taxable value goes up a whole lot, uh, the mill levy has to go down, so the tax increases. And, and this, this is the pure example, this property changed at exactly the same rate all other properties. And that don't happen, not every property changes at the exact same rate. Summary of this, taxes increase when budgets increase. Taxes don't increase when assessments increase. If, uh, if our real estate market were to drop, you would still collect, you and the school and the city would still collect the same amount of taxes, even if our real estate market dropped. If the county assessor took a year off and did nothing, and the assessment notice this year was exactly the same as last year, your taxes would go up if all of the budgets went up. And they will, all right? We expect budgets to increase, we have increased cost. So even if our market didn't change, taxes are going to go up next year. Even if I took the year off and everything was the same. A significant increase in the market does not result in a windfall to the taxing entities. A lot of people assume that when their assessed value goes up, there's more money coming into all of the taxing entities, and that can't happen, because your budgets, the property tax portion anyways, is capped. We don't get more tax money when our market goes up, when it goes up a lot anyways. And our market is going up a lot this year, more than what you can increase your budgets. In the past, we've experienced an increasing real estate market of two, three, four, five, six percent was a big year when our market went up that much. Uh, we're going up twenty percent or more. I had an appraiser, uh, tell me, uh, Friday, some parts of the hills forty percent, is what our market's doing. Okay, well, taxes can't. Budgets, budgets can't increase that much.
Oh, sorry Chairman. So you can raise the budgets, and you can assess people more based on that percentage, whether it's twenty-five, fifty, whatever. You said that can still increase their taxes, right?
Yep, there is a.
How does that not increase our budgets? Meaning, it, how do you keep it so it stays at three, based on all those increases?
The levy changes. The levy changes. So, uh, another example, I double the value of everybody's assessment. Across the board, everybody, double. If you're going to collect the same amount of taxes as you did last year, the levy has to be half. Otherwise, your budget would double. So the levy has to drop.
So you dropped the levy, but you still increased his taxes?
No. If the budget you collect is the same as it was last year.
Right.
And I double everybody's assessment, the tax will be exactly the same, because the levy is half.
But.
Taxes are set by the budgets.
Let me, okay, so Lloyd went up sixty percent. He doesn't pay, do you pay more taxes this year than you did before?
That was my own fault, I paid too much.
I'm just saying, okay, I'm just saying, in general, so he, he increased, instead of paying two thousand a year, now he pays five thousand a year, okay? So he went up. So when we're saying, well, you're not going, it might not went up sixty percent, but he went up, then everybody that had increases, it went up if it went to a certain percentage, you said. But that doesn't matter, in a sense, because what happens is the overall total cannot increase three percent.
Yep.
So you only increased some people's?
In, in my example, I double everybody's assessment, I double everybody's assessment, except a quadruple his. And budgets stay the same, everybody's taxes are going to be the same, except for his, because his went up more than everybody else's.
Okay.
And, and that happens, because in, uh, the mass appraisal process, some properties go up more than others.
Okay.
Some go up not as much as others.
But no matter what, they, they're saying they pay more taxes, which they could.
Yeah.
But the overall levy.
Is going to go down.
That doesn't make people happy, just because the levy went down and he had to pay more taxes. Just saying. Okay, so they can say that, I'm not trying to be mean or anything, I'm just saying in general.
But every year, their taxes are going to go, go up the amount that we increase our budget. So if we increase our budget of one percent, two percent, or three percent, yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna see an increase. The only way you're going to see a decrease is if we decrease our budget, ultimately, which I don't foresee that happening anytime soon.
Yes. Okay, now we're getting into what happened with our real estate market. Here's a map we got from a federal government agency that says the market for homes in South Dakota increased twenty percent last year. There was something we saw, uh, the end of last year, that said, South Dakota was number three in the nation for a rising real estate market. This is just something else that says our market went up twenty percent. The darker color is a larger increase in home prices i- in this country. Notice, uh, Minnesota only increased twelve percent last year. That's because they're all moving here. Homes are not worth as much there, because they're buying homes in South Dakota. Uh, that strip down the west, Montana, Idaho, Utah, uh, we hear about the increases in the market over there. South Dakota is a big increase in our market, which shouldn't surprise anybody, we've heard that. This is something that I created just to tell you what's actually happened uh, with assessment notices this year. So I pulled out thirty-one thousand residential homes. Okay, not counting commercial and ag and bare land and all of that. The thirty-one thousand homes that we mailed assessment notices to, seventeen thousand of them increased between fifteen and twenty-five percent. That's that highlighted band there. Most of the homes in Pennington County increased between fifteen and twenty-five percent. Another twenty-seven hundred, uh, increased between twenty-five and thirty. Uh, Lloyd is in that, uh, a hundred and thirty-seven of them that increased sixty percent, okay? Uh, you get down to the bottom, there's five hundred of them that more than doubled. Most of those are because, uh, something was added, you know, like you built a house, okay? It was bare land last year, it's got a house on, of course it doubles, or more. But this just gives you an idea of what the typical home did this year on assessment notices. The, most of the prop, most of the homeowners in Pennington County are looking at between ten and twenty-five to ten and thirty percent increases on their assessments. This is what commercial property did. Uh, office and retail properties didn't increase much, warehouses a little bit, uh, but no surprise, multi-residential apartment buildings, big increases on those. We're seeing those built all over the place. Rents are going up, uh, there is a huge demand for apartment buildings, and they're worth more. It follows the residential trend.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskin. So relative to office and retail, if they only go up two percent, and that mill levy is going to be forced down because of the huge increase in residential, I mean, I'm just thinking that their taxes could actually be less than last year.
Probably, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and I don't want to say yes, but it depends on the specific property.
I'm just saying that, that's a possibility.
Yep, uh, very real possibility.
If they're assessed right.
Yep, yeah. This is what happened with the ag assessment, okay? Crop soils, we, we get, uh, we get these numbers from the state. The state gives us the top dollar numbers that's based on, uh, crop prices and productions that have happened over an eight-year Olympic average. All right, crop soils went up five point eight, non-crop, three point seven. The overall ag assessment increased about five point one percent. So not much big increases, you can see the graph going there. It's, uh, It's, uh, slow increase. Uh, it's based on an eight-year Olympic average. That is the end of that. Uh, now we talk about growth. All kinds of gossip about what's happened with growth. We, we have about $214 million of new property that's added to the tax roll this year. That will be about 1.8% uh, that a budget can increase based on that new growth. That's significantly less than what it was last year. I think Cindy told me it was 3.772% last year. Our growth that you'll be able to use for your budget will be less than was last year. And the best explanation that I have for that is that we have as much new property being built this year as we did last year and probably more, right? We all know what's going on out there. But last year, we were able to add $214 million in new growth plus growth that's coming out of TIF districts on top of that. And it was about $50 million on top of that. When, uh, when growth happens within a TIF district, you cannot use that growth until the TIF expires. And that can be eight plus years before we ever get to that point, however long the term of the TIF is. This year, about 20, 27% of the new growth was within a TIF district that we can't use for budgeting this year. Okay, and this year, we just happened to be in a year that we don't have any TIF expiring that we can capture that growth and use it. Last year we did. We had five TIF districts that expired amounted to about $50 million that we could add on top of whatever was built last year and call it new growth. This year, we have only what's being built this year, except what's in a TIF district that we can't use.
Shannon, how many TIFs do we have? Does anybody know in city and city? I don't know how many. I think there's 90 some.
I was gonna say 90 some, yes.
91 or 96 or something. And then we have six that haven't expired yet. Do we have?
Oh, no, there's gobs of them that haven't expired.
No, we have six then.
No, in the county, I think we only have three active.
Yeah, three.
Okay.
The TIF one, two and three.
Are, are done.
Done, okay.
Yeah, most of the TIFs are in the city of Rapid City, few in Box Elder, very few in the county. Uh, and of those 90 some, hmm, a lot or most of them have expired. Uh, I don't know how many active TIFs we have. I think the key point is, is about 27% of the new growth that we had this year is in a TIF district that'll wait for years before we can capture that. Last year, we were able to capture some of that when they, uh, dissolved those TIFs. None of them dissolved this year. That's my presentation.
Thank you, Shannon, for that, putting those real numbers in there too. Chairman.
Commissioner Ackerman.
Ms. Holly, would you put these into our, uh, equalization packets, this, this presentation, if you would please? Thank you, Ms. Holly, and the real values and stuff for this year. Appreciate it.
Uh, Mr. Chair, maybe one more question for Shannon. So Shannon, last year, that $50 million that, that we were able to use because we retired some TIFs, how does that affect the taxpayer relative to their taxes?
You can raise your budget by the amount of taxes that $50 million of property will pay and it doesn't increase the levy on anybody else.
Okay, that was my question.
So there's more government money available to pay the bills without the rest of us having to pay more taxes.
And we're not, we're not going to have that luxury this year.
Well, we've got, we've got some of that, but we don't, we, we missed out on any dissolving TIFs.
Okay.
Okay.
Next time.
Okay, I have a request, uh, into the commission. I, uh, provided you a memo. Uh, my office is short, uh, three appraisers. I will be short another employee in a couple of weeks. Uh, we cannot or we don't want to hire at this time of year. I cannot afford to replace those three positions when we're dealing with setting valuations and the appeal process because my existing staff, their time is devoted to the phone calls and the people coming in. I can't hire new appraisers or I lose the existing appraisers to training, right? So we, we hire our new appraisers when we get through the appeal process and we start them in the summer and they go out and they start looking at property. Uh, so I have three positions that are open right now. So the rest of my appraisal staff, the, the rest of my staff is working shorthanded through this time of year. A very, very conservative estimate is we are saving $45,000 in budget money because we've got these positions open. And I am asking the commission, uh, to give my staff a $1,000 bonus, a one-time bonus as a thank you and a reward for working through this incredibly busy time of year, short-staffed. Uh, it is busier for the people we still have in the office, um, when we lose other employees. This $1,000, uh, per person in my office, not even close to that $45,000 we're saving the budget, will still come $25,000 under budget.
Chairman.
Commissioner Ackerman.
Couple of things, um, I went to Shannon's office and, um, my bottom line is if we were going to do these bonuses, which, um, people knew when we first started, um, we got some of the COVID money. And that COVID money, I believed at that time should been used for some bonuses. And I was pretty straightforward on that for that reason, because the employees that were staying with us through this COVID and through all the issues, um, they, you know, put their time in. They had to deal with all the issues that COVID, missing more employees and overtime and everything. That's when I thought that those bonuses should have been given. I truly believe, um, if I was going to do the bonuses, I would have done it then and that's when I had agreed. Because now to piecemeal it, um, Shannon, your people do amazing job. A lot of the, the county people or county employees have been doing amazing jobs. And if, if I had the money and knew what the wherewithal that we had enough money to give everybody bonuses that, you know, made it through this pressing time and it's going to get, I think, not any better. I think this shorthandedness is going through every department and every business in Rapid City. So, um, even though I believe that your people are, are doing a wonderful job and everything, I personally cannot just give your department, and you already know from other departments except for sheriffs, that, um, I don't believe in giving bonuses at this time, just because of, we don't know where our budget is. I keep hearing 21% um, we have in our reserves. Um, I keep saying inflation with gas, utilities, paper, anything that's going on this year. We're only two or three months into this. You have it in your budget, you said. And I appreciate that because you had said that yesterday. So you could give your people bonuses and not affect your budget. But what about the other ones that it would affect their budget, but they deserve it as well? That's, that's where I have the issues. Holly only has three people in her office. She would like to give them all bonuses because they've been working overtime. They'd have to, they've had to do a bunch of other things. Every department can say that. So, and employees know that when it comes to them, I pretty much want to do the right thing. But for me, piecemealing it per department, there's going to be 14 more departments that are going to say the same thing you're saying. So we've already done, or two others, yours would be three. There's still, what, 14 other departments? And to be fair and, fair and just, um, I'd have to do every one. And I don't think our budget can take that hit. So because yours can, some can't, then Holly doesn't get to give bonuses because she doesn't have it in her budget. She, she tightened it up, you know, and plus past COVID, used some of her other inflation and other stuff in it. So for me, um, I'll be saying, no, not because your people are not doing amazing job and always have. And you know that, um, I've always said that. I think we're in a bind because of what COVID did. We're in a weird time because of, we're, we're coming out of COVID and we're still having these shortages. And people's mindsets have changed in many ways. And I keep hearing, without sounding rude to government, government's a little bit stricter than other businesses for what they have to do. And they're not really to come in and do what it takes to be in government right now and work in government. So, um, just, I feel bad in one sense because I believe they deserve it. But I also got to protect our budget for all county employees and county constituents.
Mr. Chair.
And make sure that's covered, so.
Commissioner Ross.
I'm going to take a different position and the reason why is I look at the big picture. The big picture is that you're in a very unique situation. You're going to, we're coming up to a period of time where we need your department and your employees at their highest, uh, level. And if your three employees down, you're going to have more assessment appeals this year than you probably had in the last 20 years. We need to support the staff that decide to stick around and I'm totally in favor. I think the 1,000 is very conservative myself.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, when would the payout be? I know you said it's, it's for those that are employed on April 1st. When would the payout be? Round, uh, roughly. I don't need to know the exact payday.
Whatever the next payday is after, after April 1st.
Okay.
I, I don't know when those days are, so I just set that date.
Boom, okay, I got you. My second question to that is, what happens if then you pay out that, that bonus to these individuals and they leave May 1st? And I'm just throwing out hypotheticals.
I'm trying to prevent that. But if they do, yeah, there's nothing I can do. I'm not going to claw back.
Got you.
So Shannon, how long have those positions been open?
We lost, uh, one appraiser two weeks ago. Uh, we lost, uh, the other appraisers, uh, right at the end of the year last year.
Okay, so you've not advertised at all for?
No, we haven't. When we get towards the end of the year where our appraisers are focused on setting valuations and going through the appeal process, we can't afford to take one of those and train a new guy. The new guy won't be useful to us through this time of year. He doesn't have enough experience to deal with a property owner and appeal. And we lose the existing experienced appraiser to train him. So we get through till we get to May and then we hire new appraisers and they work all summer long and then they have some experience when we get to this time next year.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
You know, I mean, this year, towards the end of last year, we've had a struggle with, we've asked departments to get creative, do different things, uh, working with their employees where one gets a day off here, one goes, you know, do things like that. I understand the concept of one thing should be for everybody, but I come from a company that has five different divisions in their company. Have five different functions. Each one has a different function. Each one's struggling with different things in their division. So one, a blanket policy doesn't work for each one. Prime example, people working at a convenience store are harder to replace than one that works in the office. Uh, different types of things like that. So I think, I think you're doing a smart thing by say, you know, training would, is it going to cost you? It's going to bring you down if you tried to bring in, get them up to speed at this point in time. I think you're looking outside the box, which we had told departments to and find it within your budget to be able to do this to, to help your employees out. So I want to support it for that reason is because I think we're looking forward those spots. You've seen it in your budget and there's just no way to create divisions that are, each one has different functions and are, are different things are happening all over in each division. So, you know, I just wanted to kind of throw that out there because I see it every day where I work or some are doing really good and some are struggling hard as heck. I mean, they, they really are. So I, 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 I think you did the, the due diligence of when you brought this forward.
Mr. Chair. So on the, we all know that there's a shortage of real estate appraisers in the state of South Dakota. And one of the reasons why is because with my 30 years' experience and I get somebody that says, Ron, I want to train under you. The minute I do that, I reduce my income by 50%. I can't sit there and take the time to bring them up to a level where they're productive enough that it, and that's, and I kind of see that's where, I can see why you don't want to hire anybody right now because you're going to sit there and take three people that are going to have to work double time. And if they sit there and they're training somebody, you're gonna, you're predict, it's going to be a lot more burden on us when we get to the assessment appeal, having people that don't have that experience.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner Ackerman.
I don't know if you've talked to your employees lately, but you have a lot of division between employees with these raises and these extra FTEs and these things that are going on that if you're going to do this, you should just do it across the board because it's going to keep coming in. You should see what that budget can entail or take. And maybe it's a 500 for everybody across the board because of many of these employees, you should see how long for retention because we're giving bonuses for people that are coming in. We're giving bonuses for people that have been there for a while in some departments. Where's it stop? And where's a, how much budget can we take? I know and understand what they're going through. I have businesses and I had to be creative. I had to be creative in how I changed it in order to survive through these shortages of employees. It's not just Shannon. It's not just Joe and his, his CDLs. It's not just Jay working 4 million hours. Jay needs to have a, a bigger, uh, raise or maybe a, um, increase in his budgets or his, uh, salary. If you're not listed to your employees, you have 800 of them, four of them are, 400 in the sheriff's department, which was covered. Now we've got 400 more. If we're going to do it for Shannon and not you personally, Shannon, but if we're going to do these raises, do them across the board and figure out what that budget can handle. Because you're going to have a mass exodus or you're going to have division in employees, which you already have, that are way past us losing more employees. You're going to lose because of these decisions we are making today. And I have talked to a bunch of employees and they have called me. I don't know if John's talked to him, maybe John has some more input. But department heads are saying the same thing. So we're going to piecemeal. I'd rather do it, if we're going to do it, let's do it all and not do it piecemealed. Because they're going to keep coming in and we're going to have the same situations and we do. If you ask every department, Gary, you've probably been talking to them. Every department has these same things, 911 and their training. Shannon's is very important, his training, Janice's train, Janet's training, Cindy's training. Everybody that you're talking about has the same amount of issues and training and things that are going to affect them. How are we going to solve this problem without piecemealing it together like this? So to me, that's just wrong. I think you should talk to your employees before you start making these decisions and making mass exodus or division in departments because what we are doing by these decisions.
So Shannon, I'm not going to be able to support this either. And I, and I'll tell you the reason why. Is I think we do need to deal with all of the employees and I think we need to do it prior to the end of the year. So I'm really looking for something to come forward to this commission that will deal with all of the county employees to get us through this year and to be looking at the future of what we're going to do next year. Obviously, things have changed drastically since we sat and prepared the budget for the current year. Uh, I think we honored most of the requests, you know, coming into the year. Obviously, things changed, uh, to nobody's fault. It's just the way the market has been as far as trying to either hire employees or retain employees. And so I'm going to encourage and I, I had just a, a brief email with John over the weekend. Uh, you know, really asking that something can be brought forward for consideration by the commission uh, for the county employees. And I'm hopeful that we're going to have something coming forward.
Gary.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
I think you guys already know where I stand. I mean, I do think. I mean, I do think the county employees are important, and I've already voted against a couple of the other ones just because of it not being in the budget and us not knowing the impact. I'm thankful that we at least had an overview of how this would impact the budget. But I'm on that line that it would be nice to to understand in general how it's going to impact all the employees because if if each department's doing it differently and I I understand each department probably needs a different mechanism for all their employees because there's different things to consider. I would, I mean, I don't know if it's possible, but even when you're building your budget to show that, you know, if we don't spend X amount of dollars in these areas that we budgeted, I don't know, maybe that's probably getting too into the weeds of it. I don't want to be micromanaging your budgets either, so. Yeah, I would rather see a comprehensive from from the county rather than piecemealing a lot, so.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner LaCroy.
Thanks for for all the the input and discussion. I you know, I Mr. Drews, I I'm in support or something along those lines. But in those cases, since John's sitting here and probably the department heads are listening to this, you see now he come up with this this funding to do this for his employees. My challenge would be to other departments to be able to do something of the same. That would be my challenge if they could all come up with their own, then we could be unified in what we do if they could find something. If if not, we would look for something else. But I mean, uh to those departments that could have a way of doing it, bring it, you know, forward it to John, and let's all work on this together.
There any public comment relative to this subject matter? Now it's back to the commission. I don't have a motion.
Move to deny.
You have a motion to deny by Commissioner Haddock. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second for the discussion. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Nay.
Nay.
Pass three to two.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
Item 18, items from the highway department.
Good morning, Commission. Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Superintendent. First up, item A, authorization to purchase corrugated metal pipe. Uh this is something we do generally every year. We haven't bought pipe the last couple of years just because we haven't used a whole lot. Um we will probably need to replenish our uh our inventory this year. Typically, 2018, 2019, we spent about $25,000, and as I said, we didn't spend anything in 2020 or 2021. So um we in in another note, uh last year, I I spoke of purchasing a modular steel bridge off of this uh bid. We did actually receive a quote from a construction contractor to install two of these bridges, one on 159th Street and one on Trask Road out in Wal. Two of these these two bridges are actually load-rated bridges. Um the cost to install those are would be around $600,000. Just to put that in perspective, that's about what we pay for one bridge, uh you know, on say Thunderhead Falls or something like that. So we're we're looking at all sorts of different I different options for getting these bridges replaced. With that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions to Joe.
Motion, if I could, your motion to authorize the highway department to purchase corrugated metal pipe from True North Steel here in South Dakota utilizing the Beetle County, South Dakota bid award on January 11, 2022.
Second.
Motion and second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Item B, um so this is our annual bids. This is time of year that you guys award those. We did receive bids on March 3rd. Uh so it took us a little bit of time to go through those. Um the first one on your list there should be asphalt concrete overlay. Uh we received three bids for this one. Two of those bids were very close. One of them was uh pretty far out there. The low bid failed to acknowledge the addendum on the outside of the envelope. Um so therefore, we are suggesting going with Simon Contractors.
That be my motion.
I've got a motion to uh award AC 2022 asphalt concrete overlay Lower Spring Creek Road to Simon Contractors of South Dakota. Uh amount of $357,773.25.
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next up is our gravel crushing contracts. Um we totally we we budgeted a total of $750,000 for each of these pits or for these pits combined. They came in at a little over $1.1 million. So therefore, we're we're asking to award the wall area bid to Western Con uh Western Construction in the amount of $636,500 um and requesting to reject the Nichols Creek uh stockpile due to budgetary constraints.
So moved.
Uh I've got a I've got a mo- okay, so are we doing the two of these together? Is that?
One is to award and one is to reject.
Mr. Chair.
So what your motion is, what?
Move to award the concrete on the aggregates.
Okay, I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Commissioner Roskinak.
Oh, that's just going to make the motion.
Oh, okay. Uh any public comment in regard to this one? Now back to the commission. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Our next project is asphalt surface crack sealing. Uh we received two bids.
Number three, Joe.
Because we we're taking it as it came, so I I I think Commissioner Haddock was was indicating that she wanted to award and to reject on that same one, and we split that. And so we now need a motion then to reject uh the aggregate stockpile.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
I will move to reject ATG 2022 two aggregate stockpile Nicholas Creek bid from the Western Con Western Construction in Rapid City, South Dakota due to budgetary constraints.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
All right, next one, asphalt surface crack sealing. Uh this is actually the only bid that came in under uh you know, out of all of our bids. Everything else did go up. This was uh highway improvements uh services, I believe it's. I got it wrong in my notes here, but in the amount of $175,956.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner LaCroy.
If it's okay with the mo- our commission, these next three have to do with asphalt servicing or surface treatment, I would read all three in and move for approval.
Is there any objection to going all the next three as one?
Move to award ASC 2020 asphalt surface crack ceiling to Highway Improvement Inc. to falls out to go in the amount of $175,956,000. 175,956,000. Uh number five, move to award AST 2022 asphalt service treatment to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Inc., Rapid City, South Dakota, amount of $919,063 $63.04. And number six, move to award MR 22 million in reclaiming to all estate payment recycling and stabilization Rogers, Minnesota. So there's no amount on that one.
Is there a is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Is there any public comment on this?
Joe.
If I may answer the question on the the million and reclaiming. So last year, we uh piggybacked off of Brown County to do uh Creighton Road. So this bid is a tip or the the same sort of format will allow other counties to uh piggyback off of that, and it will allow us to do um basically wherever we would like to do in the county. Um we're planning on doing Rochford Road up in District 1. Which that's slated to be about $100,000 that we have in our budget. Could be more, could be less, so.
Okay, for using the reclaim.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And if I may, I just want the asphalt surface treatment, I just wanted to point out uh last year's bid was about $739,602. This year's bid came in at $919,000, uh an increase in 25,000 or 25%. So you can see those costs are definitely going up. I just wanted to point that out, so.
Okay, uh we're going to move on to 2022 supplies. Is there anything on those that you'd like to discuss with with the board?
I can just run through. I can run through some of the stuff that we had from last year and then what our bid prices this year and what some of the differences are. Our aggregate materials, our three-quarter inch base course last year was $8 a ton. This year is $950 a ton. Uh our asphalt composite bid last year was $70 a ton. It went up to $90 a ton this year. Basically, that asphalt concrete composite is for an overlay that we typically didn't uh plan for, but it's something that popped up over the summer. Asphalt maintenance materials last year was 5460 a ton. This year it's $62 a ton. Concrete pipe went up uh 60 cents of lydial foot. Uh then our AE 150, our cutback or emulsified asphalt, went from $512 a ton to $632 a ton, a $120 ton increase. So uh you're definitely seeing that increase. The oil prices are are increasing, so.
Does the commission have any questions on all the rest of these bids? Anything from the public? Deb, would you read them all in?
Yes, sir. So just go motion seven, then read them.
Yep.
Motion seven, move to award AS 2022-01 aggregate materials, item number one to Crowl Incorporated, Sundance, Wyoming, Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on location. Motion eight would be moved to award AS 2022-01 aggregate materials, items number two, three, and five to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, and Western Construction Incorporated, Clapham Bridge Pit, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on location. Motion nine is moved toward AS 2022-01 aggregate materials, item number four to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 10, move to award AS 2022-01 aggregate materials, number items number six to Western Construction Incorporated, Clapham Bridge Pit in Conneke Pit, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on location. Motion 11, move to award AS 2022-1's aggregate materials, items number seven, eight, nine to Simon Contractors, seven, eight, nine to Simon Contractors, South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, and Western Construction Incorporated, Clapham Bridge Pit in Conneke Pit, Rapid City, South Dakota, for materials awarded. Motion 12, move toward AS 2022-02 asphalt concrete composite to Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on simulated projects project costs. Going?
Did you get all of them?
Are we doing?
Fencing?
We're not doing 13.
12.
You want me to do 13, 14 of those two?
Yes.
Okay. Motion 13, move toward AS, thank you, 2022-03 asphalt maintenance materials to Simon Contractors, South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 14, move toward AS 2022-04 precast concrete pipe and bridge projects to Fort Forterra Concrete Products Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 15, move toward AS 2022-05 cutback and emulsifier asphalt to Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 16, move toward AS 2022-01 aggregate materials, item number one to Crowl Incorporated, Sundance, Wyoming, and Simon Contractors of South Dakota Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota, based on location. Motion 17, move move toward AS 2022-06 de-icing sand to Western Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 18, move toward AS 2022-07 fencing to M&amp;M Fencing, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 19, move toward AS 2022-08 guardrail to Hill Construction Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 20, move toward AS 2022-09 magnesium chloride solution to Dustbusters Enterprises Incorporated, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 21, move toward AS 2022-10 seeking fertilizing mulching and erosion control blanket to M&amp;M Fencing, Rapid City, South Dakota. Motion 22, move to award AS 2022-11 timber bridge materials to Wheeler Lumber LLC, Whitewood, South Dakota.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for items.
Good one, Travis.
Seven through 22. Uh is there is there any public comment on any of these? If not, is there any?
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Roskinak.
Uh relative to motion 13 through 22, can you just highlight some of the projects those are going to cover? The guardrail, the hydro seating.
So guardrail is typically anything that gets hit throughout the year. Um so like Lamb Road is a is a prime example that guardrail seems like it gets hit once a month. Um so he'll we'll go out there and fix that. That's something that we can't fix in house because it's got some curved rails. What are some of the other ones there? I've got to get to them here, Ron.
None of these really pertain to uh Sheridan Lake Road, though, right?
No, so that's all a uh all encompassing bid. M&amp;M fencing was doing the fencing for the Forest Service on last year's contract for uh the Forest Service portion of that. But that's just to keep the cattle off the road, so that was all new fence installed on Sheridan Lake Road. Uh but that's the only portion of this.
So these could cover entire Pennington County, no particular district, just the day-to-day maintenance.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. C.
Item C, uh so this is the same thing we've done the last couple of years here with Sheridan Lake Road in regards to the temporary speed limit. Um this year, the contractor's working from Rockwood or yeah, Rockwood all the way to uh Micro Bob's Corner, the the westernmost bridge. Um so we're asking to decrease the speed limit to 35 miles an hour in that boundary. Um and then we'll we'll put it back to for a final speed limit resolution next year uh when they're complete at the end of August, so.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Laster.
Move to approve resolution 2022-03-15-1 temporarily reducing the speed limit on Sheridan Lake Road to 35 miles per hour from Victoria Lake Road to Spring Creek Trailhead.
Second. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item 19.
Uh good afternoon, Commission. Sean Smith, Pennington County Highway Department. Item 19 is a request for variance to ordinance 14 for 4807 Noname Street. They are looking to put in a second approach on the property due to uh an additional structure. They're looking to put a pole barn structure in right here. Um it's kind of illustrated in this photo here. Um a little bit more dimensioned here, about 12 feet off the existing property. There's currently a driveway on the east part portion of the parcel here. Um upon this request, uh it was found that this approach had not been permitted as ordinance 14 came in after this was already there. Uh upon inspection, it was found that the culvert is undersized, will need to be improved. Um our office does not support this variance because we feel there is an alternative option, simply relocating this approach just to the west here and utilizing the 50-foot maximum for ordinance 14 would allow to serve both this driveway and the um additional pole barn while avoiding this drain field. Um you can see this drain field here in the photo. It's pretty uh well-defined in this aerial. So with that, I guess, uh I believe Mr. Herman, uh the property owner, and Mr. Anderson is construct uh contractor in the audience. Um but I will stand for any questions. I'm I'm sure they would like to speak on this.
Any questions before we hear from Mr. Herman?
Chairman, can you bring up Rapid Map on that road a little bit for me, Sean, and not that it makes it right?
Yep.
I thought I saw a couple of them that had a couple of approaches.
So I went through and looked. There's there's in this Dunsmore area between Dunsmore and Alberta, there's over 200 homes. There are currently 13 that are uh has uh secondary approaches. One happens to be right next door. 12 of these 13 were in. When you go back on Google Earth, you can scroll back to 1998. Uh it's as early as you can get a legible aerial. Those were all in. Uh ordinance 14 went into place in 2005. Mr. Herman actually brought to our attention one that was done just a couple of years ago over here that we'll have to look into. But the other 12 were all in prior to ordinance 14.
So my question is, Sean, has there been a problem with two approaches on? We just don't do it?
For our ordinance, we allow one. We try to reduce, you know, approaches are are. Per our ordinance, we allow one. Uh, we try to reduce, you know, approaches are are points of uh you know, intersection points of conflict, you know, with traveling public. So we try to reduce them. You know, this is, yes, it's a low volume residential area. Um, but that's, that's how our ordinance is. That's what we.
And I appreciate the ordinance and usually I follow the ordinance, but if I saw an issue like there was a safety issue or there was something like that on this second approach, then I think I would have an issue with it. If it was in a high volume traffic area, uh, that would be pre- pretty much no. But because of the space that they have on that property, because it doesn't look like it would be a a safety factor. For me, uh, I don't, I don't believe I'm against it unless something else comes up different, but again, um, I take everything, I don't always do ordinance fourteen standards, but if it's going to be a county issue, meaning if we had to take care of that driveway or that road in a different manner. Um, because of that, I would probably uh vote against it, but in this case, I I I don't see an issue. Plus he's gonna take out his front yard. And mostly his front yard is septic right now, so that's just my opinion.
Commissioner Ross, can I?
What is the uh, got any idea what the traffic count is? Probably pretty normal.
Nonanna, I do not have that currently.
And so I I don't see the, normally I would look at, you know, look at the safety part of it, so I don't see the traffic uh volume being much of a problem and I, in the line of sight, I don't see a problem there, so I'm gonna kind of go along with Deb on this and support that second to ingress egress.
Mister Chair. Yeah, Commissioner LaCra.
I actually like their their lineup better. You know, as as you show the way that he has it, it where they want to put it, see how it lines up with that other road. And so that gives a good line of sight for both left to right plus forward to see if anybody's coming out. I I think I get what you're saying is that the the other driveway is under undersized. So I would be in support of this layout because I think it works better, but I think uh they follow stipulations and would would a stipulation be that they they fix the drainage?
Yes, they'd have to fix, they'd have to improve this culvert to meet ordinance fourteen standards, which would be, it's currently it's a twelve inch by twenty foot culvert. Uh, it would need to be upsized to uh eighteen inch. Um, if the eighteen inch doesn't work, being that it's an existing roadway, fifteen inch would be allowed per per our our uh review.
Okay, without seeing, I guess I'd like to hear from the applicant and his contractor, do you, do you guys have a problem with upgrading the other, the the culvert on your other approach? Because normally that's what you want to do is improve all the flow, you know, the drainage in your, on your property. That would improve it too. We we're just be forcing you to do it now.
Yeah, um, I'm Larry Anderson, uh, the contractor. Um, as far as the other driveway, uh, until he brought it to our attention that that had to be upgraded. Um, I've already talked with uh um Mister Herman here and and I I told him already, if we get the other driveway put in there after we start putting that driveway in, we'll, we'll actually change that culvert on this other one to make it, to make it to where it needs to be.
Applicants, you guys are both okay with that?
And that would be, and I, and we'd be doing it for the cost materials too, because we're already there, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hargrave.
Um, I'd like to approve the new second approach to be built with uh two ordinance fourteen stands and the existing approach be approved to meet ordinance fourteen standards and that, that would mean the culvert.
Got a motion and a second. So do I understand there's a septic uh that's in between or would be in between these two drives? Is that what?
Yep. So I can show you back on the other area, Commissioner Drews. So, uh, let's see, I'm drawing it right here. So a septic sits right here, the drain field then runs.
Okay.
Runs right through here. That's the drain field that's, that they're trying to avoid with this approach.
Okay, good.
Uh, Commissioner Ross, connect, uh, Joe actually gave me the traffic count. It's a hundred and one on that stretch there.
So that's a bid directional, a- average daily.
Average daily traffic count, yes.
Yeah.
Any further questions? Anything else you'd like to say in regard to it?
Um, I guess my question is, is there's quite a few driveways out there with, like, I moved into this property just two years ago, so if you look further to the left, there's really not a lot of drainage in that area. That's why I was kind of questioning that set or the the um the main driveway is whether it really needed to be replaced because there's really not a lot of drainage in that, in that ditch area.
Um, actually, this, I've, I've been out just in my short time here with the county, I've been out to three different, maybe four, three for sure, might possibly four in this area of drainage issues. Particularly because they are undersized culverts. Um, there's actually quite a bit of drainage that runs through this. Um, everything slopes, this is a hillside, everything slopes down and ends up down into this drainage basin right through here. But in this area alone, I've been to three homes that all had dealt with twelve inch culverts that have had an issue. So that's, that's why we go with that ordinance, so.
Okay.
The reason I ask is because I grew up out in this uh neighborhood and I just was driving around since the situation came up. And I would say probably most of these houses out there don't have adequate drainage up in those ditches. Um, in fact, I went through and took a bunch of pictures and can name and I obviously was able to pick out quite a few with no culverts or drainage.
Mister Chair. Good. Commissioner LaCra.
You're, you're probably right, but you know, through the permitting process and going through this, that's how we can get them up to standard. You know, you, you're right, access, giving you a second access and we're just asking to upgrade so that when somebody else comes up in front of us, we can say we're, we're being consistent in asking you to upgrade your, your drainage so we don't have a problem in the future. It may be twenty years before, thirty years before we get everybody, but I mean, that's, that's where we're at. I think, I think we're being fair for you.
Okay, nonanna, I appreciate that. Thank you.
That, that's the bottom line. Because everybody else didn't do it, probably some other people are getting flooded out and causing issues. So what's gonna happen hopefully is you'll start a trend and smother people by making those flows go like they're supposed to with those culverts. Instead of flooding out the, maybe the few that are getting flooded from not having culverts or that's, that's why Sean is is saying that you know, a lot of those don't have that drainage and they do need them. So not trying to pick, not trying to pick on you.
No, it's okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment in regard to this issue? Back to the commission, all in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Items from the public. I do have, um, David Luden. Uh, this is, this is a time that you can uh bring anything before the commission that you would like. Uh, it's not a, not something that's on the agenda. So there's no action taken on what you might present, but you're welcome to present to us.
Thank you. Uh, David Luden, homeowner twenty four seventy seven Covington Street. I sent to all of you guys a quite the email here on the nineteenth of February with everything I've been doing for and fighting for a year now and bounced around from department to department and just kind of sick of the mess that's going on. It's a twenty year mess. It's, it needs to be taken care of, so I'm hoping to get that put onto an agenda so we can actually kind of speed, get things going and kind of get people, other departments talking and getting something going. I have been working communicating with the coo man with the school of the facilities and he's kind of holding it up right now. I got an email. I thought they were gonna vote and on the, uh, on the agreement from twenty years ago tonight, but it looks like he is now holding it hostage in a sense and a parking lot got built on the northwest corner and he there's no documentation why the county built it there and in the agreement, it was supposed to go in the southeast corner and he's in his emails putting a stance that he's not signing off on this until the county built him a parking lot down there. So, and that's not my fight. That's somebody else's. It's this land that's adjoining to mine that is just unmaintained. People are coming across my property. I sent you guys police reports. That's the ones I have witnessed. If I'm not there, there's nobody to see it or call it in and it's just immense. So that's one that I'd like to get on the agenda and I'd also like to get on the agenda on getting a second approach put onto the property. I do plan on trying to do some de- developments onto it. I do got a semi truck and it would be nice to make a loop through there and future developing this property, either a multiplex or developing it into multiple lots. So it's kind of right now it would land block the back lot if that's the direction I go, so getting a second approach onto it, onto the New Haven Street, which takes an easement crossing and I did put in a week ago from yesterday, a written request on that and so should be.
Mister Chair, have you had your property a long time, Mr. Luden?
I bought it a year and a half ago and she, the lady, has owned it for forty plus years and they just started maintaining because nobody else would. It's.
Yep. Commissioner Haskin, I.
Yeah, I've been trying to work with you.
Yeah.
I've never actually went out there and I don't know, uh, I know Joe asked me to the, sit down and visit with him on that because it's a little more complicated than it appears, but I could, I, I could at least request that we maintain that property better. And we take the measures to keep people from being on there that shouldn't be on there. We can do that until we figure out what we want to do, but that would be my opinion on how we could uh kind of look at your property rights. If we own the property, we need to make sure that uh we are good stewards of that property, so I can sit down with our highway department to figure out how we can do that until they know exactly how they want to dispose it.
And there's some more issues on to it. I know Joe has come out and did some land survey and measurements and my, my garage, the garage has flooded. The irrigation ditch was buried fifty years ago. It all flowed into the irrigation ditch. There's proof in this garage, black mold's growing and it has been flooded. I think they showed that there's a three inch drop. And after they left, I went and relooked and where this three inch to the sidewalk, there's a box culvert from twenty years ago when they redid the street. The road actually had, the sidewalk in the box culverts actually have sunk. Otherwise, there wouldn't be a three inch drop. So if that's truly what the measurement we're going on, that's new, that just kind of, you know, when you're on the spot, you don't think of stuff, but that is something that has popped up at the road and the guy's running it. There is dirt there that is residual is what they said that's blocking it from the sidewalk and so I think technically that next downpour and I can take evident pictures of that, my garage, garage is flooded. It's another lawsuit that's coming up and they said, they came out and said that they would dig a trench down the, where the ditch is, where the new amount of dirt is and I don't know, we haven't really discussed much past that, when that would happen or if it's still on the agenda or not, but.
So as far as you know, it's not on their agenda for this evening, then?
I, we really didn't talk about that. That was beginning of January and I guess I don't know if it just got forgotten about or if it's been brought up or not, so.
Mister Chairman.
Commissioner Lassner.
I've been working with David as well. Been at this place a couple of times, had some conversations, was out there with Joe and and Rusty and all them were out there and uh, I've had many conversations with Joe about this particular property. Joe, do you have any updates that you'd like to share about what we've recently talked about because you're right, Mister Luden, there are some issues with the school, but um I've been working with Joe and kind of trying to get something pushed one way or the other and I, I, and he, he presented something to me this morning, so I figured I'd let him get an opportunity to give it more accurately than what I might regurgitate.
Well, I guess I don't know what information you want me to divulge, but uh, you know, we've been working with the state's attorney's office to figure out what we can do with this thing. Um, it's in their hands right now. Um, as far as anything being done with the property, Ron, and you know, I, I told Mister Luden last summer that we would, or last fall, we'd mow it, you know, a little bit more frequently. Generally, we mow things twice a year and that's what this lot had been being mowed is twice a year to to keep the the grass down. Um, as you all know, we have a lot of things to do in the, in the county as far as maintaining drainage and and maintaining our ditchways. Um, we did find some information about, you know, a, a lot of things, so I've got that all that information over to Megan and and Tracy and they're working on it to figure out exactly what can and can't be done.
And, and it is, it is understood that we're trying to figure out so that we can move forward quickly so that we can give an answer to everyone that may be involved.
Absolutely. I mean, as, as quickly as we can, right? I mean, these things take time. It's as uh, as I talked earlier, yesterday, it's, it's a very complicated situation that I've had a lot of conversations over the last month, month and a half with several people. Um, I'm fortunate enough that my dad worked for the school district for twenty eight years, so I kind of piece some of this history and the the people back together and been able to make contact with some of those people. So we're trying to to work through this and and get it done as quickly as we can. May not be as quickly as Mister Luden likes, but these things take time.
Sure.
Thank you. Anything else, Mr. Luden?
I get, no, and I understand it, things take time. It's
Yep.
real slow, but I guess I I do want the interest that I am interested in this property that I don't it seems to me right now there are some backdoor dealings. We're trying to just give it to the school and I don't think that's I think the pub, it should be up for the public, not just me. It should be open for anybody and because it's not in the agreement that it's goes to the school.
They won't, they won't backdoor you. They do it all up and up, so when they talk, they have to talk publicly on it, Mister Luden, so there'll be no backroom deals.
I got emails that it, it, it is what it is, but yeah, I, the, from the school, they're not telling me anything. I've been trying to get in, in contact with the school board. I've sent them three, four emails each, please contact me. None of them will call me. None of them will email me. Yeah, I'm getting shut down there and I'm getting I mistruth from the facilities of the school that, that we haven't even talked about it and I'm getting emails that, oh, you guys have been in contact, so Joe has been, he's been honest. He has sat there and anytime I've called him, he does sit there and tell me the truth. I ain't bashing on Joe at all, but I am on the other neighborhood of the school. I am getting a closed door. They're not being transparent and.
Mister Chair.
Commissioner Hargrave.
David, first of all, thank you for coming to the meeting and sitting through this long morning that we've had. And to, to give you s- your uh situation. I've, but I think we've all gotten the emails if I am correct, so I mean, it's been updated through all of us and I greatly respect Travis and Ron for, for doing what they've done, come out and looked at your property. So it's not going on a blind eye. And doing what you're doing, i- i- you're pushing people to keep it on the books and and I would keep up on it till you get a final answer from the school system, but uh I think you're doing the right things and and coming here to this meeting today and and sitting through and expressing yourself and Joe's gonna work with you. Everyone on here do it, is going to, but as one of them just said, you're working with government, so it's gonna take, take some time. So, but you started the process and appreciate it.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hargrave.
Joe, this question. Is there anything this commission can do to send to the school system or anything to get an answer for you or Mister Overshelder? At this point, it's just kind of.
Right now, it's with the, the state's attorneys are working together.
Okay, with the school system?
Yes, Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. This is an extremely complicated issue where we may have some legal obligations that we have to fulfill. So our office needs to do research. We need to meet with the school district's attorneys, so it's not going to be a quick process.
But just keeping up to date with Mister Overshell that we can send him a message so he knows not what we're doing basically in with the school system in one sense, but it's being continued because you're working on the situation. That way he knows that we just haven't forgotten. You know, that this situation needs to be handled, whether it goes his way or not. I'm not saying that, I'm saying that in general. I'd like to know if my land was next to it, if there's possibilities or if there's not possibilities in the long run.
We will disclose anything as required by our public records requirement.
Just, just by telling him, you know, you don't have to tell him what you're doing, just that you're still, you know, trying to figure out the process.
Yep, and as I said, we'll disclose anything that we're required to by state statute.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you coming.
The uh ease, second driveway easement, is that something we could put onto a, on a agenda down the road here or how?
Have you been working with either? Have you been working with either? Okay.
Uh, that's something also with the state's attorney with the way the, the right of way is there. I don't know. Exactly how that's going to work and I expressed that to Mr. Luton last week when I spoke with him. It's, it's, it's very complicated out there as far as what we can and can't do because. Right now, currently, our roadway is on an H lot that needs to be signed by the, the, the school district, so. Um, the, there's just a lot of stuff going on that right now, I don't know that is the time to be going, putting a second approach out there. And I told him that last week when I spoke with him as well.
So David, uh, I, I don't think you're gonna get any answers that you'd really like to have today. Uh, but I thi- I think by coming, uh, you know, obviously everybody now knows that, you know, we're pursuing this, want it resolved. And. It is in the hands of, on the legal side at this point in time before I think it can come back to this commission, so.
Okay. Sounds good. I appreciate you guys staying.
Thank you. So I need a motion to go into, uh, board of adjustment.
Second.
Got a motion and a, uh, second. We're just running a little bit behind time. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. So, uh, when we said as a board of adjustment, just as a reminder, uh, board of adjustment is, is different than setting as a regular commission. Uh, to approve, uh, any items in the board of adjustment, you need to have four positive votes, four positive out of the five, so. The super majority, not just a, uh, simple. First item, Cody.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner, could I just have like two minutes to pull up the presentations? Okay, so agenda item A is variance VA twenty-two dash zero two. It is to reduce the side yard setback from twenty-five feet to ten and a half feet for a proposed carport. The applicant landowner is Paul Cox. The location of the property is one, five, five, eight, seven Antelope Creek Road. The property involves three acres. It is currently zoned rural residential district with a residential land use. Access is off Antelope Creek and there is special flood, flood hazard area on the property, uh, zone A. Uh, when looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach, uh, when we review them. Uh, for prong number one, whether granting the variance turns counter to public interest, uh, the answers are on the screen. I'll read them out loud. Uh, number one, no, the requested setback is ten and a half feet from the side yard setback. A setback to the side yard should not, should have minimal impact on the neighborhood. Uh, number two, the neighborhood consists of rural residential district and agriculture district, which requires a twenty-five foot setback from law property lines. It appears that all the structures in the neighborhood meet the required twenty-five foot setback from law property lines. Number three, no, uh, the zoning ordinance for rural residential district requires a twenty-five foot setback from law property lines. The proposed carport will be ten and a half feet. From the property line. Uh, the zoning ordinance allows for variances when strict application would result in practical difficulty or an unnecessary hardship, which would deprive the owner. Of reasonable use of his land. Now, the applicant has three acres of flat land on which a carport could be constructed, uh, that does not require the variance. Uh, number four, no, the future land use of the property is rural residential district, which requires a twenty-five foot setback from law property lines. And number five, uh, no, the requested setback is ten and a half feet from the side yard setback. A setback to the side yard should have minimal impact, safety, health and general welfare. On the public. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance. Uh, number one, no, no physical conditions exist that would, uh, warrant approval of this variance. Uh, there is no topographical constraints having prevented a carport to be built on the subject property that would still allow, and it would still allow for the. Applicant to construct a carport and maintain the required setback for the zoning district. Uh, one A, no, enforcing the twenty-five foot setback does not create an unnecessary hardship. The applicant still has use of the property. As a carport can be constructed in a spot that meets the required twenty-five foot setback. Denying the variance would not create an unnecessary hardship on the property as there is buildable area on the property. And one B, no, no special condition exists. The property consists of three acres of flat land with buildable area that would meet the twenty-five foot setback. Uh, currently on the property, there's a single family residence with a detached garage and a ten by ten shed. There is an onsite waste art treatment system. The special rider offer near department review. Uh, no major objections or concerns were, were received. Uh, the applicant has stated that the variance is required, uh, because of the narrowness of the property with the location of the septic system and the floodplain on the property. Uh, the width of the property is approximately a hundred nine, a hundred and sixty-nine feet wide. Uh, taking a twenty-five foot setback from either side would mean that there is still a hundred and nineteen feet of area between the setbacks. Uh, by taking the floodplain, the septic system and the setbacks, um, the applicant approximately has one air, one acre buildable area per the diagram. I'd like to note in your packet, it shows a eight by thirty-two carport. Uh, that was a mistake. The carport's actually twelve by thirty-two. Uh, the diagram on the screen is the, is the correct one. Uh, carports are not regulated by FEMA, uh, therefore the carport can be placed within the special flood hazard area without obtaining a floodplain development permit. Uh, so if you include the floodplain, uh, the applicant has approximately one point six four acres of buildable area. Uh, the applicant has stated that this is the preferred area, preferred location of the carport, not that is the only location the carport can be placed. Uh, weather, weather cannot be considered a hardship as all the lots in the neighborhood and surrounding area experience the same weather. Uh, if you look at the American Planning Association definition, undue hardship. It states that the need for variance is due to unique circumstances of the property, not the general conditions of the neighborhood. Uh, denying this variance would not deprive the owners of reasonable use of their land. Uh, their property already has uses of single family residence and a detached garage. And the applicant has more buildable area to build the, the carport. And denying the variance would not deprive the applicant of being able to construct the carport, again, as there's buildable area. So with that, staff is, uh, recommending denial. As there's no special conditions on the property, that would excuse literal enforcement pending the county's zoning ordinance. And the applicant has other buildable area on the property in which a proposed carport can be built. Uh, however, if the board of adjustment disagrees, uh, staff would recommend one condition.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haskin.
I'm gonna move approval with one condition based on, does it injure the neighborhood? No. And does it. Harm the public safety, health or general welfare? No. So, um, I'll be moving on. My motion would be to move approval.
Thank you. Mr. Chair.
You have a second?
I second.
Commissioner Haskin.
Uh, what's carport gonna be made out of? That'd be, uh. Gonna be metal?
I believe it's metal and.
Like tubing. And I, I, I'm gonna go along with, uh, Commissioner Haskin because. We got a letter of support from the lady next door. If that was gonna be a concrete floor and a wood frame, I'd probably. Not do that because the lady next door might sell it and the next person might have an issue, but a metal carport. And I think the reason, this particular location is because anywhere else on there on that green area, he's, they're gonna be subject to hail. And that's the reason they're putting the carport up anyhow, if I understand it. So hail, to me, is a kind of. Physical. I mean, it just depends how you look at it, how you interpret it, but uh, I think that's the reason he'd like to put it someplace where it's a little bit more protected. And there's only one little canopy where that would work and that would be adjacent to the, to the garage, but once again, if that was anything more than just a metal carport, I'd probably. Have to think a little harder about it.
Chairman, I have one follow-up, sir, if I could.
Go ahead.
Just so you guys know, this was the man that came in that wanted, we're gonna rezone it, but we told him if he just came back. Because of the carport, we would discuss it then. So just so you're all in the know of that.
Okay.
That's why we've changed it to a variance.
So Cody, the, the area that's in white, in front of the red vehicle, I presume that's what we're talking about, that?
That's this camper, correct?
Oh, that's a camper that's sitting here?
That's the camper that's sitting there. That's what the carport's gonna be used for.
Okay, so they build the carport right over the top. Okay, okay. I'm with you.
Um, so, so staff would just like to clarify the motion. Does that include the condition?
Yes, with one condition, Cody.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item B.
Uh, item B is subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-two dash zero three. It is to waive the requirement to dedicate and improve the section line right away on the west side of a subject property line. Uh, the applicant and landowner is Michael and Jocelyn Sullivan. The surveyor and engineer is, uh, Bradley Limbo. The location of the property is, uh, two, three, eight, three, zero, South Rockerville Road. Uh, it involves seven point eight eight acres. Uh, current zoning is rural residential district with a residential land use. Access to the proposed properties will, uh, be off Neckio Road and South Rockerville Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, when we, uh, review variances, we take the two-pronged approach, uh, for prong number one, whether granting the variance turns counter to public interest. Answers are on the board. I'll read them out loud. Uh, number one, proposed tracks will have access off of Neckio Road and South Rockerville Road. Uh, number two, yes, the neighborhood is residential in nature. Improved rightsway do exist to provide access to the proposed lots. Uh, number three, no, where the existing section line right away or portion of the section line right away is located within a new subdivision. Or joining any portion of the new subdivision, the entire sixty-six via section line right away shall be dedicated and improved by the developer. Uh, number four, yes, the current comprehensive plan identifies the property as rural residential district, which requires a three acre minimum lot size. Uh, proposed track four A and four B are over three acres. Uh, number five, no, Neckio Road and South Rockerville Road are existing rights away, uh, you, are, is used for access for the proposed tracks. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance. Uh, number one, yes. Access to the proposed tracks is provided by improved rightsway of Neckio Road and South Rockerville Road. Uh, one A, yes, requiring the section line right away to be improved or dedicated would require the applicant to construct a second access road. To the property when existing access exists. And one B, yes, the ordinance is in place to ensure that all proposed lots of the subdivision have legal access. The proposed tracks, um, have access from Neckio Road and South Rockerville Road. Uh, currently, as the property sits, there is one single family residence on the property. Um, for the proposed lots, uh, track four A will be four point nine three acres, um, and will contain the single family residence. Track four B. Uh, will be three acres and is vacant. This was rather an offer near department review. Uh, the highway department said it is not opposed. Uh, to the request and approach permit is on file for the parcel that gives access from South Rockerville Road. Oh, there is not a fi- one in file, so they'll have to file one. Uh, that will be handled during the planning process. Uh, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, the board of commissioners approved layout plan LPL twenty, uh, one dash seventy-two with conditions. Approval of this sub, subdivision regulation variance would satisfy a condition of approval. Uh, so with that, staff is recommending approval of subdivision regulation variance, uh, twenty-two dash oh three.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haskin.
Still moved by staff recommendation.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment in regard to this? The applicant in the audience? No? Okay. Uh, any kind, any further discussion by the commission? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried.
Move to adjourn the board of adjustment and reconvene on the board of commissioners.
Got a motion and a second. Um, all in favor of returning to the board of commissioners and indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Senator Brittany.
Good morning, commissioners. Brittany Moll, our planning director.
Know what time zone you're in, but it's not morning anymore.
Right.
Oh, yeah. Good afternoon. The board of commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on uncontroversial and routine planning and zoning items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item C is layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero two for Martha, Martha Washington Place LLC. Rodney Johnson to create lot A of lot one of Martha Washington Place subdivision. And planning commission did recommend approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero two with ten conditions. Item D is layout plan LPL twenty, twenty-two dash zero three for Little Guys LLC, Ben Brink, KTM Design Solutions is the agent. To reconfigure lot lines to create lots one and two of Powderhouse subdivision. And planning commission recommended approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero three with nine conditions. Item E is layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero one for Charles and Kimberly, Kimberly Klafka. All aspects landscaping is the agent to combine two lots to create lot forty-five A of Burns Class or MS. Six nine seven. The planning commission recommended approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero one with nine conditions. And finally, item F is layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four for Larry and Nancy Van Overshield. To reconfigure lot lines sixty, lot ten R and lot eleven R of Bears Den subdivision. And planning commission recommended approval of layout plan LPL twenty-two dash zero four with nine conditions.
Any members of the public who wish to have any of the items listed on the consent calendar to be removed for discussion or debate? Seeing now back to the commission, any, the commission have any items they want removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Not a, Commissioner LaCroy.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Following planning and zoning matters in our uncontested hearings are those which the planning department has not yet received or provided co- comment contesting the item. Documents for each item have been reviewed by the commissioners and decisions during these he- hearings will be made based on the information provided in the packet. In the short presentation. If we receive comment contesting the item, the matter will be addressed in the same manner as a contested hearing. Brittany, item G.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner.
Cody.
Yeah, looks like.
I was wondering, but I was like, okay.
Yeah.
You got a lot more hair on your face though.
Item G, uh, is comprehensive plan amendment, uh, CA twenty-two dash zero one. Uh, it's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district to low density residential district. Uh, the applicant and landowners, uh, Larry and Nancy Van Overshield, uh, involves approximately, uh, three point six nine acres. Uh, current zoning is rural residential district with a residential, um, land use. Staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one. And the planning commission also recommended approval of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash zero one.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
I got a motion and a second. All in favor to, uh, approve the comprehensive plan amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item H.
Uh, item H is rezone RG twenty-two dash zero one. Um, the app, it's to rezone two point eight nine acres from rural residential district to low density residential district. Uh, the applicant landowner is Larry and Nancy Van Overshield, uh, involves two point eight nine acres. I stated that wrong in the last agenda item. I apologize. Uh, current zoning is rural residential district with an existing residential land use. Uh, staff recommends approval of rezone RG twenty-two dash zero one. And the planning commission recommends approval of rezone RG twenty-two dash zero one.
Is there a motion to approve the rezone? Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion and a second indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Contested hearings. Now we're back to Brittany.
Good afternoon again. Um, item I is to reopen a vacated section line right of way RS twenty-two dash zero one by resolution. The applicant is Cross Sabers LLC. Uh, the staff is recommending a motion to find the petition invalid and that the petitioners may refile in accordance with SDCL thirty-one, three, six. And to deny without prejudice to reopen of section line RS twenty-two dash zero one.
Sorry, Ms. Brittany.
Okay, this.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
We got, we got a motion and a second.
Yeah.
So the motion is.
We have to deny.
For approval to.
Oh, I'll let. They can't.
Did GH?
Nope.
This is I.
We're an I, right?
Yeah.
An I.
Move to find petition invalid and the petitioners may refile in accordance STL thirty-one dash six and two. and to deny without prejudice and reopen.
But you want, Megan.
Sorry, I was scared. I was like, whoa, 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 no, no, no. Don't do that.
Motion and a second. Take it.
Megan Curry with the State's Attorney's Office. I believe that there's a motion that's written for the board. At this point, the petitioners have not submitted a valid petition pursuant to state statute. So it is not even properly technically in front of this board at this point. So in my legal opinion, the only option is to deny and let them reapply correctly.
That's why I was redoing my motion.
Okay.
That's what I meant.
So your motion is to deny.
Start it over.
Okay, my motion. My motion would have been for stat, is to follow S.A.S. recommendation, which was moved with the file. The petition's invalid, and the petitioners may refile in accordance to SDCL thirty-one dash six and to deny without prejudice and reopen of section line RS twenty-two dash zero-one.
SDCL thirty-one dash three dash six.
Did I miss one?
You missed one.
I probably did.
And I have a motion and a second on that. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Yes. Opposed? Motion carried. Item J.
Item J is relocation of section line right of way RS twenty-two dash zero-two by resolution for Cross Sabers LLC to relocate a section line right of way located between section one and section thirty-six. Again, staff recommends a motion to find the petition invalid and that the petitioners may refile in accordance with SDCL thirty-one dash three dash six and to deny without prejudice relocation of section line RS twenty-one dash zero, or twenty-two dash zero-two.
That would be my motion.
I've got a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, item K.
Chairman.
Now I'm a little confused here.
Yeah, that's what I was with. I thought it was continued because they weren't going to have the Forest Service meeting till the twenty-second of this month.
So the word that I had received is that Nick Hobart had wished to have this continued.
Not you, Nick?
Is that the understanding that?
Continued from today.
That the understanding we have?
So I, I think I can clarify some things. Cody Sack, environmental planner. So, so Nick did contact me, requested to continue. It was on this meeting agenda anyway, so it still had to be heard. So staff was going to give an update on some of the stuff that staff looked into in the meantime. That was kind of directed by the board from the March first meeting. So he's, he's in favoring of continuing if it needs to, but he's made some adjustments to his request that I can present to the board if the board wishes to hear it, plus some additional information that has come out in the last two weeks.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Okay, he wants to do a rezone, and if he does rezone, he, he's going to be permitted to do the four rentals. And if he sells the property, the people that buy can do the four rentals. And so my concern is, I don't even like the, I don't like that rezone as an option. I think his dad is saying if you just do the, rent the house out in the cabin, he might need a variance, but I think I'd support a variance for that specific use that he's requesting opposed to a rezone that you're opening the doors for somebody else to do something different.
So, so a PUD overlay is not a rezone. It's, it's an overlay district. It's, the easiest way to describe it is if someone comes in with generally through more uses where they would need multiple conditional use permits to, that require, would require a conditional use permit, it's ran as a specialty resort or a rec resort. The property still has to meet the underlying zoning district of agriculture. So everything that's in agriculture still has to meet the required uses. It still has to meet the required setbacks, acreage and everything. It's not a rezone. You don't rezone anything to PUD anymore. With the four cabins, that's what's requested. The board does not have to give him four. So for instance, staff's condition on number one, you can change that to the one existing rental cabin that is existing, plus his manager's residence and to allow his house to be used, the manager's residence to be used as a vacation home rental. That would require three different CUPs, therefore falls under the specialty resort. So he's in favor of, of doing just those two, what's existing on the property as, as the rentals. Also, in the meantime, I know there is some discussion of the easement being used for commercial uses. The property to the north does have the conditional use permit since nineteen ninety-eight to build portable camping sheds as an in-home occupation. So that easement has been used for commercial purposes since at least nineteen ninety-eight.
So I, I'd like to research some of that, Cody, and then instead of us today telling it. But because there's a continuance, we can still have discussion on it. Nick wants the continuance. The applicant's agent or whatever, he would like it to continue it. So I would say just because of that information that you have shared and that Nick also wants to continue instead. Nick, did you, did you want it till the next meeting? Is that what you were thinking? The next commission meeting? Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chair. Well, it looks like there's been progress on this. I mean, going from four and you've got an understanding with your dad, and, and I think that's what I like right now is that I got this letter saying, hey, you can have one. I'm okay with that, and I think that's what we argued about, and I was concerned about earlier. And one of my other concerns was the maintenance of the road from prior, before all this stuff. So, but this helps. I'm glad that you guys were able to come together and, and work on something. So if you want to continue, I'm okay with that, but I'm just letting you know I'm okay.
Ms. Holly, what is, what is the next board meeting? So that'd be my motion is to continue until April fifth.
Continue until April fifth?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, thank you, Nick.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to continue this item until April fifth. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item.
Item L is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash twenty-two for Pennington County to add section three-thirty efficiency dwellings to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This was continued from the March first, twenty-twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting, and Planning Commission did recommend approval of this ordinance amendment. So I know that there were some questions at the last meeting regarding some of the residential code requirements.
So.
Chair.
Chairman, go ahead.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So I'm generally in favor of this because I do know there's a lot of people who look at, looking at an efficiency dwelling, or I mean, some people live in their campers all the time. I mean, there's, there's people who do that. So people living in small areas doesn't really bother me. However, what I am a little concerned about, and maybe I didn't see that when I was reading through this, is what I don't want to happen is if we permit it in any zoning ordinance or any zoning area, that then if a house burns down, let's just say in, in one of these communities that's been built up, I don't want them to be able to then come in and build one of these efficiency homes. And so that's would be my biggest hang-up on that. And so what's the safeguard to that? How, how are we going to make sure that these go in appropriately? So, you know, so somebody doesn't just go in unless they have like a conditional use permit to make a community with these things or, or something of that nature. You get, you get what I'm asking?
So under that section C requirements? And it should be number one, and number two.
Number two.
Such conditional use exceptions, efficiency dwellings with a building permit are used by right in the following districts. If you don't want them in a residential district, then strike that. Or, you know, those are the two exceptions. Those are the ones that give it the use by right.
Chairman.
Commissioner Hattig.
Just a question. So Brittany, we had talked about maybe we put this instead of making decisions on efficiency dwelling, we're going to have a planning for the commission, and we're going to talk about efficiency dwellings on that in May instead of having. Was this the one you were talking about that we could continue till then for more discussion?
It's up to the board. I know that there was a lot of concern. I've got a lot of comments from different commissioners about the residential code requirements and then the zoning districts that they were allowed in.
Would it cause any issues if we put it on that agenda? Because I guess that, I was taking that suggestion from you just because I had a lot of questions as well, like between the mobile homes, the tiny homes, the lots, the different things that we were going to change. I guess I didn't have full understanding with that. I guess I could meet with you before then, but I just had the understanding that you didn't mind if we continued it till later.
I do not. At this time, if someone wanted to come in and have a tiny home, they can still apply for a conditional use permit and go in front of the Planning Commission and get one. The only difference with this is that it actually has standards, like there's actually guidance for what those need to be under the CUP, just a blanket CUP under five-ten. You know, there's, there would be a lot of more flexibility, I guess, or it would be based on the conditions of that CUP.
Well, on that CUP, you could make those conditions, Brittany, couldn't you? Based on some of the, some of the criteria that you put in on the efficiency right now, if it was a CUP that came through right now.
We could, and it would be up to the Planning Commission to accept those as conditions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I, I'm in support of, of this because I think we can always come back and readjust it, make changes that we need to. I think later on in the agenda, you have some discussion, you want to form another committee. But I think the conditional use permit, this is the key part to it, is it still has to come through and it's challenged through the Planning Commission, the discussion. But I think, you know, one of the things I think of the most, the concerns I've even gotten some emails on is, you know, folks, we've heard that properties in the hills are up forty percent, and people are, I, I've said it before, that in order to make it, as people get ready to retire or living on the same property together, this is a, a solution to be able to afford to keep living in the place that you're living at, if, if it's up in those places. So we've had this continued twice. I, I'm in, in support of moving it forward, and I'm in support of getting the committee together at the end of this agenda. And if something changes with that committee and they want to bring some changes forward, I think it's easier to do then because we have something in place.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So I, I guess I'd be in support of it too, but I definitely want to see some changes in it under item B criteria and other restrictions. And efficiency dwelling is required by IRC appendix Q must, and that word must kind of scares me because if we adopt that, a living room's got to be a hundred and twenty feet, and if it's a hundred and nineteen feet, if it is, then legally they're, they're not meeting that code, and I just, that scares me.
So chairman.
You know, a hundred, all these hundred square feet, seventy square feet, got to have a closet. What if you don't have a closet? I just don't want us to have to sit there and sort this stuff out once it starts getting, you see more of these come in front of us.
Commissioner Hattig.
So Brittany, when is our, our planning with our, do you know when that, or Ms. Holly?
The board set it for the end of May.
Okay, so what I'm saying is we've been doing these with CUPs up till then. That way you can specify them for now, what, you know, in different areas, if they come through, meaning some of Travis's concerns, some of Commissioner Ross connects' concerns. At this point, for me, I'd rather have a work session or something, and maybe we could move that up if we need to. Because to me, this is pretty important. The tiny homes, there's lots of, am I disagreeing that they're wrong or any? No, I think they're, they work really good in agriculture and not really ready on the lots sizes compared to mobile homes. Why shouldn't they be the same? Why shouldn't they be the same spacing? Some of them is to leave some leniency, some to be a little bit more strengthened. So I know we've continued it a couple of times. I just, I can, I can read through this, and for some reason I just, and ask Brittany, she'll talk to me about something, but I can't get it. I need to have it drawn out or something on a piece of paper as well. So I don't think there's a hurry. Like I said, efficiency dwellings are these dwellings we've been doing for a long time. It's not something we haven't had before. So I would encourage us to wait till we have our, our work session. Or, I don't know, if we can have something earlier on, we're changing multi, multi-dwellings. Some of that's going to come to pass, tiny or efficiency dwellings are coming to pass. There's a lot of different changes that are coming that we have to remember. And then to come back and go, okay, Brittany, we didn't really get that. We need to change that now. I'd rather, some things are going to do no matter what, but I think you're going to have a lot more changes than you think once you do vacation home rentals and some other stuff added to these efficiency dwellings. And you have no committee on those right now, so.
I don't have a motion.
I, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
You know, one of the things I liked about this, and as I say, when properties are getting to be unaffordable to most people, is, you know, you could have your dwelling and be able to rent it out and use that income in order to have a better life. And that's one of the things I, I, I see in this that I like also. And I think that's what a lot of people are looking to do, is try and just get by and better their life, and this is one option for them. You know, I, I think I've got a letter from a young lady that's, that explained how she uses it not, not only for herself and family members, but also uses for supplemental income and invites guests over and brings them to Black Hills and so forth. But that's what I, I, I like about this. You know, I understand there, there's some holdbacks, but I think we can definitely work through them. And we're not going to know until we start getting, have something to work through.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
So Brittany, could we adopt this but just not have to follow the International Residential Code? Just kind of take that part out and put every, put everything else in there that would be pertinent? Because I just, that's my only problem is that, that code seems kind of really specific and restrictive in some aspects.
Right, and I did get this code because the International Residential Code adopted this appendix specifically for the tiny home communities and the tiny home movement. And it's pretty common that these are those standard restrictions. I don't know how it would affect insurance and things like that, so I think those would be some of the things we'd want to look at, that these might be, you know, based on some fire code requirements and, and homeowners insurance. So knowing where some of these came from, because there's a, you know, in my mind, there's a reason that the International Building Code picked these numbers and these.
Is that what Grandpa City does?
I don't know. I didn't look at, on their efficiency dwellings if they did the, I know that they adopted some of the residential codes. But the appendix Q is very specific to just tiny homes.
Would, would we have the latitude to modify some of that, their criteria if it didn't quite fit what we're aiming for down the road?
You could, you could adopt the International Residential Code, and then you could have an exception. So you would have exceptions.
Okay, so if we got that latitude, I can live with it.
You would want, like, instead of this work footage, or instead of requiring them to have a closet, it would be okay that they didn't. You know, things like that, you could accept out some of them. But these are probably standards that have been vetted out, probably through insurance, fire codes, things like that.
Chairman.
You could do that through the conditional use permit, right?
Could do that what?
Through the conditional use permit.
Well, you would have to actually have the exceptions in here because if they're standards and they're in the ordinance, then those are requirements. So then it would actually have to be a variance, not a conditional use.
Commissioner Hattig.
Can you tell me when that May meeting is, Holly?
I believe the board set it for May twenty-fifth.
Well, that'd be my motion is to bring this forth on May twenty-fifth. That also, okay, I'm not supposed to speak on the motion.
And I'd second that.
I've got a motion to, Commissioner La Croix, did you make a motion on this already?
No.
I didn't have a second? Okay, okay. So I have a motion and a, a second.
Mr. Chairman.
Bring this to the May twenty-fifth meeting.
If you don't mind, just in the discussion aspect of this, I, I, I really want us to go through it a little bit different. The reason why I say this, because whenever I took my notes on this, I actually crossed out right after C, conditional use, and marked it out all the way to number ten, right before D. And a lot of that is because I think that's the area that we need to discuss. Because I think some of it, you know, some of these tiny homes could be defined differently or, you know, blocking them into this very tight-knit thing. I, I understand it's been vetted in, in some other, other areas, but that may not be what is conducive to Pennington County and the residents here. And I'd like to see more discussion on that because some of these things could be, could be a problem.
Well, I, I would suggest that particular concerns that commissioners have, that they submit that to planning in the meantime. So that they are prepared for that when we come back on May twenty-fifth.
So chairman, just one thing to that. That's what I'm saying, because if we do vacation home rentals and we change- home rentals and we change that, it's going to change, it might change the efficiency dwelling issues, and it might have a little bit different aspect to how we put it in efficiency dwellings. That's why I'm saying that I'm not against it all or anything. And for me, we keep adding different stuff with it or taking it away during the meeting. Um, my bottom line is, I'd like to see it in, in form, plus if we're going to do vacation home rentals and different stuff with it, let's do it all at once. That's, I, piecemealing it for these guys, they keep coming back trying to fix what we're trying to change in little pieces and parts, and I think, like I said right now, we could do it if we needed to with Brittany and the staff. Um, right now, like Lloyd is saying about, you know, people might need these for right now, um, we could probably put something together with the staff to do it right before then.
So all those in favor of moving this to the May twenty-fifth agenda, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Four to, four to one. Motion carried though. Item M.
So M and N would have to be continued to the same meeting, because they're associated with item N.
Yeah, I've got a motion, do I have a second? Call second. Further discussion. All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item N.
We just continued M and, so we're on, we should be on O, right? M and N just got continued.
Yes. They go together. So we're on O, Chairman.
Oh, we did both, M and O?
Yeah, because it's all connected.
Item O is public hearing of ordinance amendment OA twenty-one dash twenty-five for Pennington County to amend the subdivision regulations of Pennington County. This was continued from the February fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting, and the planning and commission did recommend approval of this ordinance amendment. Uh, this is basically a complete overhaul, overhaul of our subdivision regulations. Uh, the reason for the overhaul was we were just seeing far too many subdivision regulation variances, um, for things that just didn't seem to be applicable anymore, um, two of them being the perk and profile information and then the improvement to the section line right of way, um, the road construction and those. So, um, and this also, um, we did meet with the committee and go through this, so there were several people on the committee. Um, one, Janelle Fink was very active in that committee and she did, um, do a lot of comments, and so she worked with us, um, quite frequently on updating some of this and, and going through. And Charlie Johnson with the planning commission also did.
Chairman, I move to approve ordinance amendment zero A twenty-one dash twenty-five.
Second.
Motion.
Thanks, Brittany.
And a second. Further discussion. All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion carried.
Thank you, Brittany.
All right, thank you.
Adam P.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Uh, item P is the annual MS four stormwater report. Uh, every year as part of the county's MPDS permit, we're required to submit a report to the state. Uh, I don't think the board wants me to go through every single one of these points, so I'll just, um, hit on some of the big ones. Uh, last year was our first year under the new five oh seven, um, which changed the requirement from, um, in, involved large scale and small scale, uh, stormwater permits. We had approximately thirty-three stormwater permits and it was approximately about a fifty-fifty split between small water and our small scale and large scale. Um, the biggest change that's going to happen is there's a lot of development, uh, out in our MS four, out east of town and, in the Murphy Ranch area and a little farther east, so those map boundaries are probably going to be changing in, in, uh, twenty-twenty-two, um, for next year's report. Uh, also, the, we're working with the, the city, um, there are seven cri-, there are seven, uh, criteria that we're supposed to meet, um, one of them's education. Uh, the city and, and the county have a hard time, um, meeting the education requirement of that permit. Um, so we're working with, uh, Brandon Quiet over at the city on, uh, coming up with a, a proposal, uh, working with a marketing firm to figure out how to reach more people, um, to better, uh, meet that requirement. Uh, with that, staff's recommending approval of the annual MS four report.
Move for approval.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second. Second.
Uh, all those in favor of moving to approve the twenty-twenty-one annual MS four stormwater report, indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item Q.
All right, last item. Item Q is the Vacation Home Rental Committee reestablishment. Uh, staff is recommend, or requesting that the Board of Commissioners reestablish the Vacation Home Rental Committee to address the option of property owners renting their ancillary structures and other issues and requests. As our office is asked every day to allow VHRs of properties contrary to our current ordinances, we recognize the changing in the county and our goal is to get the ordinance updated as quickly as possible. Um, talking with staff and working, um, with the State's Attorney's Office, we are looking at, um, establishing a seven-member committee. What we would look at is not actually going through the ordinance line by line, but actually answering basic questions, like do you want vacation home renters and, or vacation home rentals in ADUs, yes or no? If you do, how many should be allowed on a property? And then another question would be, you know, working with the group, if we should have a, you know, a limitation on the number of them in a subdivision or an area. So going through and just answering some basic questions, so staff and the State's Attorney's Office can take those back and incorporate them in our ordinance. Um, we're looking at maybe six to eight meetings, trying to get some of these answers, um, pretty quickly from the group. Um, it's not to rehash all of the vacation home, it's just to kind of go through and update a lot of the issues that we're having, uh, some of the things that the planning commission have had on the planning commission, and then some of the issues that have come forward with the public. Um, so just, right now, our ordinance is pretty narrow as far as what it allows. It doesn't allow vacation home rentals in, um, ADUs, it doesn't allow multiple vacation home rentals on a property. Uh, the reason for that, and it's in conflict with our current ordinance right now, because you can't have two single-family residences on a lot. If you do that, if you, if one of them goes away and it's not a vacation home rental, now you have two homes on one lot. So that's something that we would have to look at and how to mitigate those types of issues if they come up. So, those are some of the big questions. Um, I know that we, almost every day, we're getting requests to run a vacation home, run a lot of a guest house or an ADU, and it's, we just don't have any way in our ordinance to allow them right now.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
Brittany, thank you for bringing this to light. I mean, I think one of the things that, what I'd like to see is, with this committee, is a, a set of question and questions that you guys specifically have and are seeing that you could, uh, survey, number one, whether it's the group or, or even put something on the website for a survey to explain, because I think a lot of times with vacation home rentals or what we're looking for, uh, uses are, are going to be different than just plain vacation rentals, which people, I, I think are getting tainted with. You know, they're tainted that it's, you hear so many people coming in, it just brings in more crime, does more of this, and it's, it's not true when they're, when people are trying to use them for supplemental income, wait for that. Also, our, taking care of parents that are living with them or kids that won't leave, leave home, you know what I'm saying? Uh, that type of thing, I mean, I think we need, it's kind of a wide variety of things, so I'd like to see some, just as you just explained it, some of those questions answered.
Chairman.
Or at least expressed to educate the community also.
Commissioner, connect.
And that's what I'm talking about, even with, um, accessory dwellings.
Yeah.
Are we going to allow people to have vacation home rentals for, that are accessory dwellings? Are we changing, maybe they can have it with their garage because it's an extra place, because before, um, we wouldn't let them do it in suburban, right? It was too small. Now we have tiny homes coming, how is that going to change that suburban maybe into urban? That's what I was saying, with a lot of the different changes, I'm not against it, I just want to make sure when we're changing stuff, it's, it's coming all together. Um, I think that's going to be the future. I think the future is going to be more urban, tiny home, that kind of stuff. Um, how does that compare to doing a mobile home or a modular home? And what's, what's going to be the difference? Because like I said, people did want it in suburban, but it's, it's a no, it's a new ballgame now. So, with urban, now that we have urban residential, six thousand square foot, um, I don't know. That's why I said, I think there's a lot to talk about and I'm not against doing that, just where are we putting it, um, where are we going to allow it, and what residential areas at that point? Remember, because we had very much contention on suburban residential, which, like I keep saying, I think that, that it's a whole new ballgame now.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
I'll move to reestablish Vacation Home Rental Committee with seven members and direct the commission manager to advertise for interested individuals and bring back recommendations for appointment at a later meeting date.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for the discussion. I think when we, when we get all done with this, if we're ever done with it, um, but for the, for the public, I think we need a informational pamphlet, basically, which is describing all of the various, you know, vacation rentals, uh, B and Bs, uh, the additional, you know, uh, facility on a property that can be rented, the owner occupied that has rooms that they rent and so forth. I think the whole thing needs to be described somehow or another that's understandable for, for everybody. Um, I mean, we're going to, we're continuing to get a multitude of different kinds of operations and requests, so this is great.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, I would agree.
Yeah.
On the news today, there is a, uh, they, they were interviewing one of the camper sales in Rapid City, and he says, he's getting a high percentage of people buying campers to live in. I mean, they're, they're selling their home and buying campers and living in their campers. I don't know how they're doing it, maybe a campground, but, uh, that's what it's going, that's your affordable home right there.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah. Commissioner La Croix.
I, I just want to share, I think I've shared this with Brittany, but I don't know about the rest of the commission, but, you know, I work with a guy that, that's what he does, is he rents out his rooms on Airbnb in Box Hill, and that's how he gets by, you know, I mean, I had a long talk with him the other day and he's going, I was living paycheck to paycheck, this helps. It gets, you know, I can afford to buy my tools for my job now and don't have to worry so much. And it's an inconvenience for him, but what's the difference between that and having a roommate? You, you know what I'm saying? There's really no difference, it's just another, it's a newer form of a roommate, you know, and I know there's one other problem, and this was in town, you know, the young lady bought a house and used her basement for, I bought furniture for him, that's how I found out. She rented out, her lower level has a vacation home rental while she worked and fixed up her house, and that's how she got by, she was able to afford it. I thi-, I think this is going to be a trending thing, that's why we need to kind of look at, it's, you know, when you're making fifty, you know, fifty thousand dollars a year is not a lot of money anymore. It's not. I mean, average fifteen dollar an hour job is thirty-five thousand dollars a year. You look at our housing prices, you're going to have to get creative in, in how to, to become a homeowner. So, that's, that's my main concern and focus.
All those in favor of the motion? Anybody saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Twenty-twenty-two legislative session, update on proposed bills, session activity, uh, legislature is, uh, the, the main run of the session is over, they will be back, I think it's on March twenty-eighth, which is called veto day, in which the legislators can act or react to, uh, any potential vetoes the governor may have. In addition, um, they could, under, uh, special circumstances, take up other legislation or, which I, I don't think is probably going to happen. But I think of the, uh, the bills that were of county interest, uh, one that did get, come through towards the end, which is talking about, uh, small structures, culverts and, and, uh, small structures on roads, there was a original bill for a little over fifty million on that particular bill, uh, final passage of it, it was cut down to twenty-five million. It would be, I think it's a portion by population is the way it happens. Uh, so, if you, if I figured it correctly, it's probably, uh, something maybe a little more than a million dollars for Pennington County, but not, not a lot, much more. And, uh, and of course, that's subject to veto also, so, um, Holly, do you have any particular pieces of legislation you want to talk about?
Uh, just the bill for the county that we proposed passed, that was signed by the governor to clarify the publication, last publication date.
Yep.
So that one was good. I just got an email from the journals saying the, the women's prison facility in Rapid, that funding bill just failed. Um, and the gun range failed. There was one assessment, uh, elderly and disabled that went through, all of the other ones failed.
What was that one that didn't fail, Holly, do you know?
Um, that one.
What did it say?
That one was House Bill one zero zero one.
Made some adjustments relative to the income.
Mr. Chair.
Qualification.
Yeah. House Bill twelve fifty-three, that was to provide property assessment fees and reduction of property assessments for certain seniors and revised qualifications for a property tax extension. That one did pretty good, it finally got to the Senate and got sent to the thirty, forty-first day, but that was, you know, people are always reaching out to me, you know, about assessed value, because the commissioners really take the brunt of this, and maybe the county assessor, but I'd be curious to, was that, do you know if that was Kirk Shafie's?
It was.
Twelve fifty-three?
Yeah.
And all he was trying to do is, if you sit there and look at the, uh, your income thresholds, they go back like twenty years. I mean, we need, we need to be adjusting those up to.
But I'm not so sure that isn't combined with the one that Holly's talking about.
No, that one failed.
Did they combine that with the, uh, veterans and, or not?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Anyway, I was just kind of, I was hoping that one gets a little more traction than it did.
If they continue to forty-first day, doesn't mean it failed.
Yep. Because there's only maximum forty days.
House Bill one zero zero one increased the, the value up to three hundred thousand, um, for the elderly and disabled. So, just to keep up with the changing times.
So after, after veto day, we'll bring back those that, uh, totally impact the, the county and try to make everybody aware of exactly what did pass, it's going to make some changes.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I, I just want to express my appreciation of how much information is getting back to the commission and you guys' hard work on this. I mean, I don't think, I remember a long time ago, we never got this much information, but I think we've got some commissioners who've got some feelers and peers, so.
Holly and Gary.
Yeah, I, I totally appreciate, I, I've heard a lot of stuff from, from Ron and, and Travis, I mean, you guys have got a passion of what's going on in there, and I tell you from my first couple of years on the commission, uh, who didn't have that, so I appreciate the, the work that all, all you guys are doing. It's probably the most informed and I've actually sent out some emails, but I tried texting, but I didn't realize I didn't have their phone numbers. Those are just peer phone numbers.
Well, in my mind, the way that it works is that there can be a few bills that impact the county positive. There's a lot of bills that can impact the county negative, and I think, uh, from my, the time that I spent, I spent a lot more time on those bills that impact us negatively, uh, to make sure that our legislators are aware of how that could impact the county. I try to send them examples and I, I'm able to get those from different county offices, you know, as to how it may impact.
Yeah.
Pennington County specifically, uh, also, uh, you know, I, I did have some other contacts, uh, simply because of housing and so forth, of our interest in it, and, uh, was asked to reach out to some other legislators outside of our area, uh, to try to explain to them how that impacts us. The housing authority that we have, uh, going, I mean, is a, a great example, I think, for, across the state for housing authorities. And so, uh, if nothing else. And so, uh, if nothing else, it was maybe a little bit of an education for legislators to understand what they could take back home and say, okay, here's something that's being done, you know, can we do something similar, or why aren't we doing this kind of thing? So, so, uh, it does, it all takes time. So I appreciate, I appreciate the amount of time that the legislators spend when you, when they have five hundred and fifty or six hundred bills to go through and try to figure out, you know, which ones kind of rise to the top of consideration and which ones they, they really don't care about. And, and obviously, everybody's got different interests. So there's a, there's a lot of people that don't have any interest in, for example, like the marijuana stuff. Uh, and so those legislators just, I, I mean, they, they followed somebody else, they connected with another legislator that had the information and was more, uh, current as to what was going on and, and followed them. But, uh, it's, it's difficult to digest all the information that comes in during that short of a period of time.
I, I can tell you from what you guys are telling me, I started following this stuff more diligently. And how things change from week to week is just passes one week and doesn't the next, and you're looking it up, and, and I, I, you guys to thank for that, for encouraging it, so.
Okay, we'll move on. Uh, twenty twenty-three budget priorities, there are none.
There are a lot of priorities, Holly.
No, this is just the time that we wanted to gather some feedback, um, initial feedback from the board, if you have any specific budget priorities that you would like us to look at, um, focus on. I know it's hard to ask this when we don't quite have the, the starting information quite yet, but if there's something the board has in mind, a project, a, a need, a desire, priority.
I think there, I, I think we do have some, some starting points at this point in time. Uh, obviously, wages and salary are gonna have to move to the forefront of that, we're gonna have to figure out how, what we're gonna do with that. I think as Deb pointed out, uh, we have, we have some fixed costs that, uh, we're gonna have to come up with some sort of an answer as to how we're gonna adjust to all those fixed costs that we have for, you know, taking care of, uh, fuel, for example. Uh, what's the price of that gonna be, uh, next year? And I, I don't think we can be conservative on that, on those figures, for what it's gonna cost to, uh, heat and cool our buildings and, you know, all the other things that go along with, with the facilities. So I think those are some costs that we need to be able to come up with some kind of numbers for that we can, uh, figure into it, uh, so that at the end, we know, we gotta, we gotta take wages and salary and those other fixed costs and reduce that immediately from that amount that we're gonna have. So, uh, it's, it's gonna be a different budget session. Departments are, are probably not gonna like some of the things that come down the pike, but.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haddcock.
I'm with you on the wage scale and creative ways for future employment issues. I mean, that's, that's huge, it has been huge and it's affecting, affecting us in many ways. Um, effects on twenty twenty-three, brothers, like you said, through the inflation changes. I think also a priority should be the twenty twenty-two priorities of what's changing, because we just heard Joe, every one of his items has went up majorly. That's not just, that's only one department. So twenty twenty-two, I, it'd be nice to hear, you know, some of those changes, some of those things that are becoming major issues, not just with people, how many people, you know, they are not being able to employ, but also those inflationary issues that are causing some, some pretty, pretty big changes in their budgets, because remember, we got eleven million, I think last year, eleven million this year, and we're gonna have to use some of that for those inflationary costs instead of just in, infrastructure and can it be used, um, for that? I mean, some of those things are gonna be things that we need to food for thought. Um, like I said, I don't think people are getting it quite yet, but it's only a couple months into it, so I think we're gonna be supplementing, um, some budgets, um, some of those budgets that I'm gonna give, you know, that were in the goals of giving, uh, bonuses and stuff. I think I'm on board with Gary, let's look what we have, our chairman, and this commission of where maybe we can do something like that for our, um, employees, but also, uh, be cognizant of those budgets and those inflationary costs, that are gonna do some major changes to these, these budgets that we have no idea. I guess, too, maybe in the next, how long does it take? Chairman, do you know, um, jurors, do you know, is it, is it gonna be a change in like three months, we're gonna kind of know an average? Or do we believe because of what's happening in Ukraine, is it gonna be a, I mean, how do we determine that and how do we plan for that, instead of waiting until the end of supplement going, holy crap? I mean, those are things in my brain that I just keep running through going, I, I don't know how you determine that. And do we need to do some what-if budgets? Remember, like we did the ten percent and some of the other things, that might be some issues that affect us in twenty twenty-two. So, um, just saying COVID hit us, now inflation hit us. So how are we gonna, how are we gonna protect ourselves if we need to?
Yeah, I think it's, it's anybody's guess as to where this is all gonna go and, uh, and who it's gonna impact mostly. I mean, highway obviously is gonna be impacted tremendously.
Equilization has a lot of gas, they have a lot of different stuff that they use paper that, that Otter's office was talking about for the ballots and just some, some things that you never really think of that are gonna be some, it's gonna add up to some pretty big changes.
Mr. Chairman. Something that I kind of clued in whenever, um, Shannon was talking today, that's why I was kind of asking the questions to clarify it. If we keep raising our budget to three percent plus growth or whatever the numbers are, we're gonna set ourselves up if the market does start to come back down, well, we're gonna end up having to raise that levy if we keep our budget where it's at or where it ends up having to be due to inflation and other factors. Um, it'd be nice if we could kind of consider growing it at a lower rate so that if we do see that market come back down, then we're not taking such a big hit, or at least the property owners aren't taking such a big hit if the, if the property values start to come back down, when we have all these homes that are gonna be built on the market the next, uh, eighteen months to, to two years, because whenever, when the market gets saturated, that's when the market volume goes down. I mean, that was one of the presentations at the Elevate Housing, um, forum that, that I was at that they were talking about. Once, once we get the numbers of housing in the area that we're gonna need, you know, then they expect, if I remember the numbers, I, I could be wrong, Holly, maybe you do remember that, they, they like to see like a five percent, or was it a fifteen percent? Open rate, open house rate, I think it's, maybe it's five percent. But we're like less than one percent now, that's the reason why the market's so crazy. But the market will balance out, maybe drop down if we're, if we get to a higher, um, non-occupancy rate in some of these homes, which then will lower the overall value potentially, and then that's gonna impact our, our budget numbers, because then those homes won't be that, at that level of valuation, they'll come down and it'll, we'll still have to pay that out if we have it in our budget, so. It's just something to, to think, everyone to consider.
Thing you, I think you have to remember is that, is that, uh, with, with growth comes a higher demand for services, so, uh, if you're gonna try to retain the, the level of service that you have, uh, you're not gonna be able to do a lot of cutting, uh, or reducing that amount. So level of service is gonna have to be one of the things then that's considered overall as far as the budget is concerned.
Mr. Chair. I, I agree with you, Gary. I, I, I agree with what directions you've been given so far. I think employees and that part's where, where you have to really focus on. Um, and it's gonna be a challenge just from going through what we went through today. I mean, I'm, I'm glad he explained, you know, our growth part, how it's gonna work and the percentage, and we've always, this company's always done a good job of getting the levy down, and sometimes it's not us, it's the growth that's doing it. But I think we, we do have to look at our services that we're, we're providing, because we are growing faster than we thought about. So we're gonna have some tough decisions, I think. Number one i- is employees and cost of living type stuff that we're gonna have to try and cover. And, uh, I personally would like, you know, won't know more until, uh, the, the survey comes back on the facility needs type things, because I also have concerns over what we're bonding for, what we may have to bond for in the future to keep up with this type of growth. So that's gonna factor in into some of my decisions too, but, uh, I, I tend to agree with what's been said so far, you know? Because I do think for, what I'm seeing out there right now is we're having a hard time getting some materials or even ordering stuff in, it's taken a lot longer than it, I mean, what used to take two, three weeks has now taken three, four months to get, so we gotta plan that far out for our stuff. And these gas prices go up, shipping's gonna go up, you know, it, it's just a trickle-down effect for, for everybody, so it's, it's gonna be coming in. You, I, I think, uh, Mr. Cool's gonna have his hands full, full on the sheriff too, because, I mean, you start getting into supplies, you better start planning a little bit further ahead just to be on the safe side, so.
A lot of things are made with oil that we don't know besides gas, so that's, that's gonna be huge.
Hopefully you got some thoughts, I don't, I don't know what I said, but.
No, staff is definitely continuing to work on some proposals and you'll be seeing those in the next couple of meetings.
Yeah, sounds good.
I, I can say one thing, I've always liked the three options. When they come, two options are towards the end of our budget process, once we start going through it, I like it when sending gives us one, two, or three options, once we start getting through it, because that narrows all of our thoughts down into.
And I can tell you this year, we are not doing multiple versions of the budget, like last year, we tried a, a base budget and a secondary budget. We're not gonna do that this year, you're gonna get everything in one shot of what worst case scenario might be.
Oh, yeah.
But to have it all included so that we know where we're at and we're not trying to piecemeal kind of like we did last year.
Thank you.
It was an experiment, it didn't necessarily work quite the way we had it in our heads, but.
So what I like, you guys don't like?
What's that?
I don't think any budgets ever work like they're supposed to, Holly, but it always turns out in the end, so.
We keep trying to tweak them and make them a little bit better and a little bit easier to understand, and we're still gonna do that again this year, but.
No, you're doing good. Every budget, every year has been different for some reason, and we already know some kind of change, in this case, you already know COVID did that for a couple of years, and then before that, we had some other things that were changing it because of, we are doing wage scales and, so it seems like every year I've been here, there's something changed and you've done a good job, and every time you've had to change, it might not seem like it, Holly, but the end result has been good, that's, that's what you say, that you, you did it right. And that was mostly you and Cindy worked hard on those things.
Keep moving forward with options in this department.
I'd like to see the chair and commission members. Travis.
Uh, the biggest thing that I've been working on is the PFOs, PFOA meeting, which is March twenty-second, the town hall meeting, which I've probably seen that. Um, and I'm part of the, uh, defense symposium, working, uh, dealing with the PFOs, PFOA tracks. So, um, most of my, um, time this last couple of weeks have been focused on PFOs, PFO.
Commissioner Lacroix.
Uh, I did attend, uh, MOA HR retreat and spearfish last weekend, and, uh, I can't remember the gal's name to put it on, but it was really, uh, in, pretty intense, we're gonna start doing more, got more subcommittees going. The more I know, the more you know, the better I am. Uh, series that we have that we're gonna be doing, trying to do at least four of those a year, that's bringing, I don't know, anybody went to one of those? We had Health and Human Services, the Police Department, all these different agents, agencies together and took questions and explained what each one did and we had good turnouts. We are also hosting, uh, I got the information on my phone, if commissioners are interested of doing, uh, an educational trip to Pine Ridge next month. Um, they're getting it all lined up to do, uh, visit different agencies, different, uh, to get more insight on the culture of what's going on there. It's gonna, for right now, the city council's gonna be invited and they're invited, but I told them I would mention it to you guys, and I'm sure that, I said we'd have at least a couple that probably want to go, but if you're interested, let me know, I'll get you the information and, and it's, it's a bus tour, so you leave from here, go there, do all, it's an all-day tour, just so, so you know, but I'll, I can get that information if you guys are interested. Little, little more background on it.
Is Malcolm not in human relations anymore?
No, Malcolm, uh, resigned, I believe, about three weeks ago.
He took another job, or you don't know?
I, I don't know, that was one of my tasks, and I have to give John kudos, one of my tasks a couple of weeks ago as vice chair was to come up with a job description, rewrite the job description, uh, interview process, what, what we're looking for, and that was part of what the retreat was for. Uh, I will say Malcolm did an outstanding job for HR MOA, I mean, he come in from a, a, a public and private partnership, brought it together, moved us forward, we did the, the, uh, the learning sessions, and we had a couple complaints that he worked through. I, I think he did an outstanding job, he just decided it was time to move on or had something else. Um, but, uh, yeah, you know, going from a new program, he came in and.
Refined some of it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he had nothing to work with and you, you had to start, so I think he did an outstanding job. And so that's one of the things the committee was talking about at the retreat, was how to move forward, to do more, more stuff, what are we looking for in, in, uh, a coordinator and that type of stuff, so. Um, it's coming, it's moving forward, so, um, I wanted to share that part. The other key thing I wanted to mention was, um, meeting I had with, at the youth city council was Tuesday, they were doing outstanding work, they sat back and at their meeting, we were supposed to have, uh, 4H come in and give presentation and mark, and they weren't able to make it, but Representative Katie from, uh, uh, Dusty's office.
Oh, Katie Murray.
She gave a presentation on everything that's going on, how to, uh, get into an internship with, with him and expressed that. The youth council also made the choice at the end of their meeting, they were excited about that, they really learned a lot, because Dusty's also invited them to their office in Washington this week, which I'll get, I'll get to, but, uh, she did a really outstanding job on that, but the, the youth council also looked at all the committees that they had and figured, why do we have five committees when we just combine these two, these groups where instead of having six now, they, they focused them down to having, uh, three committees and combined them. So they seen the need and they made the motion, are, are taking the action. The other thing is, is I met with the young students that are, that left for Washington on Sunday for the, uh, National League of Cities Conference that we help support. Uh, these kids were excited, they're, I mean, they had to be at the airport Sunday morning at three o'clock in the morning, fly there, by the time they got to Washington, it was gonna be like three o'clock in the afternoon, an hour to drop off their stuff and get over to the conference, because it started at four. So they, boom, 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 I mean, they didn't waste no time. I've been getting updates from Kristen on what's going on. Our youth, Rapid City Youth Council has already been on one speaker board, or one board of discussion, uh, to the whole league, uh, and also have gotten up into forums and spoken what Rapid City's doing, and I've gotten the videos from them, and I'm just, you know, one of my biggest disappointments is I wanted to be there and I should have been, because this was one of my visions for about fourteen years, is for these young people to be in Washington, so. But it's really exciting for them to see them, they're jumping right into it and, and they're gonna come back here and give us a presentation, once they're done, uh, of what they experienced there, so, and show their appreciation, plus they'll be coming back to us, I'll, I haven't told them yet, but they have to come back to us at budget time.
Very good. One of the challenges, I think, for the county is, came to light to me this, the week as we sat down, or last week as we sat down and, uh, interviewed the candidates for the Housing and Redevelopment Authority, and, and as was mentioned before, we had three excellent candidates. Um, only one of those could be selected for it. We have two others out there that are just interested in being a part of, whether it's county government, it is not all that important, but we have people that are interested in doing things, and we gotta figure out a way of taking advantage of that and. doing things, and we gotta figure out a way of taking advantage of that, and, and getting them involved in, in something. You know, I'm not in favor of large committees and so forth, so expansion of committees really isn't probably the answer to it, but I think there's opportunities, maybe with departments and so forth, that we, we just need to explore and figure out how we can utilize those, those people. Um, other than that, the rest of mine is gonna be in committee reports, so, Commissioner Ross, connect.
Well, Gary, uh, you missed the, uh, meeting that we had with David and Alice Hoffman here. Uh, they're, they're up there in the Mountain Meadows subdivision, which is over by the Rushmore Ranch, and they've got the, they've got the issues with, uh, water septic relative to the notes on the plat. Uh, she brought in just about as much information as Fern percent of the day. It, it's very complex, very detailed, and it's worth, uh, looking into, and, and Gary and I basically said, you know, we'll see what we can do. We all agree that the notes on the plat really are causing the majority of the problem going forward, I don't think putting notes on the plat's a, a good, uh, policy. But we, you know, there's gonna be others in that subdivision gonna come to us, and they're gonna be complaining about the restrictions that they're supposed to, relative to these septics in the well, and sprinkler systems, water storage, so if we can get this one worked out, we can use the solutions for the others coming forward. Uh, Gary, or Gary and I also met with Ron Jeffries, just kind of did an overview of some of the capital improvements that, uh, we're looking at, at the, relative to the Central State's Fairground. And this, uh, Saturday, there's a proposed wedding venue that's gonna be, it's a 300, I think it's 300, 350-person facility, which is, uh, gonna be right in my neighborhood. Uh, a lot of the neighbors are a little concerned, and so I told the applicants that they're going through the process right now, that please reach out to the neighbors, because we don't want the same thing to happen to this wedding venue that happened to the Evangelisco's. I said, this is, you know, their problem was the neighbors, and, and, and I said, you can sneak it in, but after it snuck in, then this is where it gets really interesting, so. They're, uh, they're having a meeting at the Minor Brewery, which is next, uh, uh, Prairie Winery, a, and so that, that they, they've let all their neighbors, immediate neighbors, know this is what we're gonna do, and that'll give those chance, those neighbors a chance to meet with them, uh, and address their concerns relative to noise, light, uh, intoxication, all the good things that come along with a, a wedding. So, that's, uh, set for this Saturday. That's all I have.
Commissioner Adcock.
Um, Care Campus Abidaries Board, I had, uh, stomach flu for four days, so, um, started that Wednesday night, and the meeting was in the morning, but I did call them, so missed that. Um, Fire Service Board, we had a couple, um, people that were running there, they did, um, some speeches, and then we had a Wildland Fire, um, he was the supervisor, he was telling us a bunch of stuff that we didn't know on Wildland Fire, that they have two, they always, uh, dispersed two trucks and six people, no matter what. Um, other than that, after that, you have to pay, um, the state for, uh, their equipment and their people, so that was pretty interesting, because I've been on there for a while, and I don't think I've ever heard that, in fact, a lot of us didn't. Um, let's see, um, we had some really good chili dogs from Station One, um, and just, they do a lot of different, um, what do you call it, training and stuff that I really appreciate they do, um, they don't charge people a lot of money in the Fire Service Board, for the Fire Service, or to be on the volunteer Fire Service. Um, so, I think that's pretty cool that they do that, and they always update on their musters and everything else they do, but, um, yeah, I think that's about it.
Okay, back to you, Ron.
I did attend the Care Campus meeting, it was just a, uh, a typical meeting, uh, went over the budget and where they're at, and, and, uh, looking forwards to another year of, uh, service. And then Gary and I attended the Central States Fair Board meeting yesterday, or last night, and I'll let Gary expand on that.
I forgot one thing, Chairman.
Okay.
The planning commission, so the planning commission, we had two things that you might wanna look up and get a hit on, uh, the glamping concerns over in Rockerville, uh, talk to the neighbors, go check it out, uh, see what their concerns are, there was four of them, with some concerns that, um, they're legitimate.
What'd you call it?
Uh, the glamping, that's gonna be going on with the three tents with John, I can't remember John's last name, but just, you know, concerns of the neighbors. And then, what's the other thing, Holly? One more, and I can't remember where. Anyway, um, just, yeah. And I'd just like to say one thing, Rich runs a really good meeting, he's just a good guy, and, um, so, oh, the, there was a thing on Rappelberg, Rampelbergs, he asked for to split two lots to nine acres each, nine point something, and it would have been called ranchette instead of rural, so we didn't get why he wanted to, um, put rural instead of ranchette. It didn't make sense with the surrounding area being ag, so what happened was, um, the commission, the planning commission decided as well that it should go back and be proposed as ranchette, unless he has a different plan that they missed, or something, um, that they should basically ask for what they need on the property. So, if it, if it needed to be that, and so that wasn't attention, so it was just lots of questions on it, so.
Okay, super. So, we did have a follow-up meeting, uh, with Rapid City Box Elder in Pennington County, uh, relative to the meeting that was held in February about some common issues, primary concerns is the one-mile, three-mile, uh, areas of work, uh, talked about, uh, combining, uh, continue to work on combining, uh, comprehensive plans, uh, utilities and drainage. Uh, ultimately, we will need a third party to help direct future planning to meet everyone's growth needs, so I was joined by our planning department and highway department at that meeting, and so, uh, all of us have, uh, some parts to play, Brittany, Jason, and Joe, I believe, all have major parts to play in the change of, of, uh, moving forward, and I'm gonna be working on the drainage issues, and I will be seeking out, uh, their help on that also.
Chairman, just one suggestion, other places they have this three-mile, because based on state regs, we have to have it, that maybe we have a joint planning commission or something like that, so then they, you, you see both sides.
Yeah.
You know, and then when we plan them, um, we give our point, they give our point, and I think you come up with some better solutions, instead of it going back and forth on people all the time.
Well, that's why we're talking about having a third party, that everybody's, uh, working with that third party just to provide the information, to have them gather the information together, so that, so that we all are on the same page with them. Then on, uh, Friday, we had Black Hills County's district meeting in Bison, uh, we had a good turnout of counties. Uh, Shannon, and then the Meade County Equalization Director, Rhea Crane, gave a super presentation, basically the presentation that Shannon gave to us today, but I think it was good information for all the other counties that were in attendance also with that. Um, so, state law says assessment needs to be at 100% full and true value, and with the market going well this year, assessments increase substantially, of course. Uh, we know that there are people that, that receive it, because we're getting the calls and emails and so forth, and, uh, the others indicated, the, the other counties that were in attendance mostly are more ag-populated than they are residential-populated, so it's a, it's a difference of the, of what they're hearing from a lot of the people, uh, but at the same time, I mean, everybody's gonna be impacted on this, so. Uh, Chris Jacobson, our executive director for the South Dakota Association of Counties, was there to give an update on legislature. Uh, was still hoping that we might be able to come up with a summer study on regional jails. I see Brown County has moved forward, they have bought a building that they hope to, uh, convert into, uh, a regional jail, they're having, they're inviting, uh, basically all counties to come in and participate in the discussion. Obviously, they're looking at their regional area of getting those counties to participate in it, and I think they're having that meeting coming up on the 26th of March, if I remember correctly. The, um, Rural Action Infrastructure Bill, which we talked about earlier, started out a little over 50 million, got trimmed down to the 25 million, but, uh, maybe, it'll be, anything is a benefit. Uh, the Western Interstate Region of Naco, uh, Representative Randy Dibert said Congress has approved $5 billion for Forest Service fire mitigation and stewardship, and I think the way he described it, it went down to, in two areas, three, $3 billion for the fire mitigation, and, uh, $2 billion for the stewardship, and I don't know exactly how that works out, but, uh, and Randy was elected president of the county group now, uh, of the Bykels District, and Holly was re-elected secretary, so thank you, Holly, for doing that. And then, uh, the Central States Fair Board, we had that meeting last night, and the annual meeting is gonna be held on, uh, March 28th, uh, I think that's at 6 o'clock, do you remember if that's correct? Okay, 6 o'clock. Uh, we, we did do the review of, uh, capital improvement projects that are planned last night, which was gonna be a lot of activity going on there with, with improvement projects. Uh, as, uh, Ron mentioned earlier, Tyler Trevillion was elected president for the coming year, Jerry Cop is vice president, Tanner Shilder for secretary, and Casey Gerlach was a re-elected treasurer, so.
You might, uh, tell them that we had a really good audit, too. What did they call it, that, a unqualified?
Yeah, unqualified audit, which is best audit you can get, so. And that's not only for Central States Fair, uh, but that's also for the foundation, too, so, it was good, so. Commissioner Lassler.
Uh, the only thing I had was the Air Quality Board yesterday, and they've decided that they're gonna stay with Zoom meetings, so, at this point in time, which I find tough, but convenient for Air Quality Board. I think that they talked about there was, uh, they had five, uh, air quality alerts that were above the .5, I couldn't tell you, but, out of the regulation, but those were the high-wind days where we had gusts over 60 mile per hour winds. Uh, they do have, they had one complaint that they worked on, but those are, that was a, uh, more or less a neighbor type thing, so that's been an ongoing thing. Uh, I apologize, it was 17 wind alert days that they've had where the, the winds were really high. They've got about 60 active, active permits, uh, and what they, what they use for permits is if you disturb them over an acre of land, so that's quite a bit of active permits, I think. Um, the other thing they, they approved was the Pendleton County Air Quality, Quality Compliance Plan was approved. Didn't know we had one.
Ordinance 12.
But, yeah, but they approved our plan, so that, what that was, that was approved. Uh, that, that's pretty much a simple report for Air Quality.
Commissioner Lassler.
Pretty quick and simple. The, uh, the Public Library, they submitted their annual report to the state, they re-elected officers, uh, the chairman's vice, vice chair is Emily Tupa, and the foundation liaison is Christine Jones, and they're just like everybody else, having problems filling the, the positions that they need to fill for staffing, so, other than that.
Very good. Need a motion to approve vouchers, an amount of $2,588,252.40. Second motion by Commissioner Adcock, second by Commissioner Lassler, all in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Need a motion for executive session for, uh, personnel issue and contractual pending litigation.
Second. She's motioned and I seconded.
All in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Have a motion to go back into regular session.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Uh, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, I've got a motion to, uh, move Derek Dowlin to B23, step two, $21.18 an hour, effective for the Pettingill beginning March 6th.
Second.
Got a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Motion to adjourn.
I got a motion in a second to adjourn, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We're done.